Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are live. You can get us started.
Thank you so much. I will call to order the city council workshop for May 11th, 2020. Call on Kristen Rush to do roll.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Simpson?
Here.
Okay, tonight, we have three workshops that are on our agenda. The policy of our city council is that for workshops, it's an opportunity for city council to hear presentations from our team, for city council to ask questions, give some direction. No decisions will be made tonight on any final decision on anything. And we do not take public testimony as part of our workshops. I have received at least one, and I understand our city clerk has received several items that individuals in the community have asked be read into the record during public comment. That will happen at an upcoming public comment session and will certainly be made part of the record at the appropriate time. But there's no procedure or policy for public comment during the workshops. So let's go into the first workshop, and we'll be talking about purchasing limits. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe we're going to have Director of Finance, Brian Archer, introduce this item, and then I know Purchasing Manager Nancy Allen will also be talking, presenting as well.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to come to you and talk to you about purchasing limits. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we came to you and asked you to change our limits, increasing the amount that could be approved administratively, and then also changing the amount that would be presented to you through a Friday memo that would then be reviewed and ultimately approved basically three days later if there was no issues. Tonight, we're coming to you to update the results of that and then to propose some additional changes that we would like to see with the success of the prior program. Nancy?
Yes, good evening, council members and residents joining us. This will just be a few minutes tonight. The purchasing program requests approval to update the purchasing ordinance to allow for more effective and efficient approval of our standard commonly purchased goods and services that have already been approved on the annual budget. Next slide. Our program continues to, our cycle of learning, and has become a leader in Colorado procurement. I'm the legislative chair for the Rocky Mountain governmental purchasing program, and my buyer Whitney Smith was elected to the executive board this year. We've earned a remarkable 135 points on our first application for the achievement of excellence in procurement and expect 150 points or more on our next application, which we just submitted. Only four other Colorado, or only a total of four Colorado agencies have earned this. I use that as a foundation for the rest of this presentation. Next slide. Our Friday memo increase, council allowed us the Friday memo implementation between 50,000 and 150,000, again for those commonly purchased and already solicited items in 2018. This does not negate council's ability to deny or place a hole on any purchase. It merely gives a much faster and efficient manner to review them than the formal resolution process currently does for these low dollar, lower dollar solicitations. Next slide. Council would continue to approve large capital improvement projects, of course, and unbudgeted expenditures, which also includes change orders for capital improvement. Next slide. This is a comparison that I put together several years ago for numerous cities. Several cities have used it to increase their limits. You can see that most cities in our population range do not re-approve items that have already been previously approved and solicited on the annual budget. The exception is Westminster at 250,000. And actually, at one point, shared this document that shows the comparisons with Mr. Councilmember Demott from Westminster. Anyone who ever wants to go through this with me, I've shared it with a lot of cities, and I would enjoy doing that. Next slide. Slides six and seven, this is just two slides that show examples of 2019 resolutions. And I highlighted, just so it was very easy to read, 378,000 for dump trucks, bridge repairs, miscellaneous drainage, roof replacement. Next slide. These are all things that were not only on the approved budget, annual budget, but also solicited formally through our purchasing department. Next slide. Of course, if you were to approve for us to put a higher limit through on Friday memo versus the resolution process, we would need to have city manager be able to approve those rather than them coming to council. So I'm suggesting that if you do let us go to 500,000 or even more, that we would be raising Mark, Devon, Lori Gillis, and key staff their approval limits as well. Next slide. I have three pages here, if you really wanted to wade into details, but I don't think we will tonight. And these are just additional fiscal reviews that I, and oversights that I would like to implement with your approval. Can we jump ahead to three slides? There you go. So finally, we need to clean up our purchasing ordinance just a little bit every couple of years. And here's some things that I would suggest. Decades ago, we exempted housing rehabilitation from purchasing ordinance. We're not sure why, since they are generally federally funded and require more purchasing oversight, not less. Also, many cities and the state have increased their bid bond and payment performance bond requirements just because it costs to get these bonds. We're charging, the vendors are being charged to do this, and it increases our fees for our solicitations. Next slide. So we're asking what may we bring forward respectfully?
That conclude your presentation?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
I'll open it up for city council question if anybody. Laura, you're first.
Okay, apologies for that. I tapped the wrong button. Could you elaborate, please, on exempting Aura and exactly what that would entail? Does that leave them at the current parameters or just exempting them from oversight, which I very much doubt you're proposing? No comment whatsoever on the great work that Aura does, but I'd just please elaborate a little bit more on what you mean by exempting them.
Rachel, may I call on you? My understanding is there was a decision that we don't really have the authority to have Aura under our solicitations. Although I do want to mention that Maureen does work with me and is currently working with me on a solicitation for demolition of a property. So it's not as if they don't. I just don't know that we have authority.
So Aura is an urban renewal authority. It's a creature of statute, technically a separate legal entity from the city. So they would be subject to their own processes and procedures. We do offer them aid at times for things like finding, Nancy is referring to helping Aura find the best price for certain services or products. But they are technically a separate legal entity from the city. We do have, we do have some oversight over them. I don't want to miss that point. There are points in time where, when they have plans, it comes before council for council approval. And also, we do have a member of council who sits on the board of Aura. But it's not like we don't have oversight. It's just the process and some procedures are separate.
Bob, Pfeiffer?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
All right, let me make sure I'm all hooked up right. Okay. So staying with that theme, with the exempting of Aura, what are we doing today that we wouldn't be doing going forward if we exempt them? Can you give me an example?
Well, the ideal example, I've helped them with their copiers, their printers. I've helped them, I'm helping them with this demolition. Although, to be quite honest, they wouldn't have had to come, they don't and would not have to come to me for that aid.
Okay, but for the purchasing ordinances, I want to make sure I'm really clear on this because we're talking about a couple of different things. One, purchasing limits for our city staff leadership. And then we're also looking some cleanup of purchase ordinance or purchasing ordinances. But I want to make sure we're kind of blending two subjects here. But with, with the exemption of urban renewal, other than helping them, was there any, any rules about them coming to us for any limits? Or was there any rules around what we needed to look at? What are we exempting them from? Is, other than, if we're not there to help them, I'm not sure why we're exempting them.
Yeah, it's not something that, it was really just a cleanup that I felt, that I understood that we don't really have authority under them. And so while we were making housing not exempt, it made sense to look and see who perhaps was legally exempt anyway. But no, there's, it's not a real difference. They were never specifically named.
Okay, okay.
And point of education on that, Bob, the, I think the current purchasing limit that the executive director at Urban Renewal has is like 25,000. And we talked about increasing that. Actually, it was Brad wanted to increase it, and we had a discussion at the Urban Renewal Board. And upon the advice of legal counsel, we left it at the 25. Really, frankly, it gives the executive director a lot more cover. Because if he or she doesn't have much spending authority, then it's all got to come through the board, so.
Yeah, that's actually good. That's actually a good thing. I mean, I would have increased it, but you know, I kind of think less noise, but that makes good sense. The other question I have around the budgets needing approval, I liked the interesting part about, like Fort Collins and Lakewood. So I'm looking back at, I don't know what page this is, but it's like the fifth, sixth page, shows all the comparison to the other cities.
Yes.
You know, it says, I want point of clarification on this. If, if it's identified as a line item and it's, or a project, or it's identified in the budget, do they still have to come in front of the council? Or do they just, it just gets approved no matter what the dollar amount is?
No, it would still come to council over, well, I'm suggesting half a million, but you, you get to set that.
But I'm talking about the other cities, like Fort Collins, Lakewood, Horton. It kind of blends weird on the presentation, but like it says here, budget formats, line item and project, not if it's on an approved budget unless council approves sole source of over 2,000, 200,000. So what I'm saying is if, if we were buying, I don't know, five front loaders and it costs $2 million, but it was identified on the budget, he wouldn't, Mark wouldn't have to come to us then if it was approved in the original budget, is what these other cities are doing, right?
No, they are not reapproving if it was on their original, if it was on their original approved budget and formally solicited. Now, the sole source is if they said, I'm just going to go off and say that I want this one, and I'm not going to do a formal solicitation, then it has to go to their council.
Okay, but, but if it was out for bid and it was a $3 million transaction, it would not have to come to council?
Correct. If it was on their formal budget, correct.
Okay, so I mean, I kind of like that because we've already reviewed it and it should just go through. I kind of like those approaches, but, but let's go back. I have one last question in regards to your proposal here of about a half million approval. Is this budgeted items or unbudgeted items? In other words, so budgeted, okay.
Always budgeted and always formally solicited.
Okay.
We're sort of focusing on what Aurora does, and we don't compare themselves, ourselves to them because they're so large. But this Friday memo idea came from them, and I think it's a very comforting thing for me. It's purchasing to still allow that to be formally sent to council.
Okay, so if it's on the budget and it's over half a million, it would still come to council. But if it's under, it, he can just approve it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying. Thanks.
I'm Marriott.
Yeah, thank you. I have a question, Nancy, for you about that same subject Mr. Pfeiffer was just talking about, which is the second approval on budgeted items. Is there any disadvantage to the way we're doing it? Is it significantly more work? Does it slow down the process? Does it make it more difficult? Tell us about what the ramifications of the way we're doing it are.
It does. Thank you for asking. The Friday memo is compiled during the week of contracts that are about to be completed by our legal department. And I take those and I put those on that Friday memo, and they come over to you. And you have until the following Wednesday to say, hold on, stop. I don't want this to, I want to ask some questions, or I don't want to approve this. I want this to come before council. By the way, in the last couple of years I've been here, none of those, none of that has ever happened. It just goes through Friday memo and you guys go, yep, okay. And another point to make, the resolution process doesn't tell you whether it was formally solicited or not. You're signing off on something that may be a sole source, and you don't even know it. On my Friday memo, you always see my formal solicitation number on the far right of that memo so that you know it's been formally solicited. And that means it went out before the public and that we had the purchasing program independently walk us, walk the city through that. The resolution process takes three to three and a half weeks versus the one to one and a half that the Friday memo takes. And in both cases, you have the opportunity to approve or deny.
Right, but is your buying process so tight that that timeframe is a problem for you? Or is it just the additional work that it takes to, to, to report it to us again, essentially?
Oh, no. I think if you realize that the, putting together the scope can take days or weeks, then we formally solicited it for almost a month. Then we have to do the formal review, and all of this is going to take place no matter what. We do the formal review of the score sheets, the submissions and the score sheets. Then it goes to contract, and only then does it start down the path of either resolution or Friday memo. So in most cases, we've been, we've worked on this for three months before it even starts down the one and a half weeks to three and a half weeks process. We're just trying to cut that a little bit.
Right, okay. So let me ask another question, those of both either city staff who's been there for a while or my fellow council members who have been around longer than I have. Have, because I can't recall this ever happening. Have any of you ever witnessed a budgeted expense that comes to council for passage on a resolution or on a consent agenda where any council member has said, no, wait a minute, hold up. I don't agree with that, or I don't want to do that anymore, or anything? Does anybody remember a situation like that?
I don't, John. I think there's been a couple of times, and frankly, it's usually with some more lower dollar items, where a council member has asked that it be voted on separately, but they've always passed.
Always passed, okay. All right, sounds good. I just want to, let me just make one comment, then I don't have any more questions. But the only comment I would have is, I don't have any real problem with streamlining some of these buying type things. I will say, however, even though we don't act on it very often, I find value in both the purchasing report in the Friday memo as well as the ones we approve on council because it's, it's difficult as a regular civilian to get your arms around a $200 million a year budget that the city has, and at what relevance does a million dollars have or $5 million or $30 million have? And so seeing those purchased items, you know, kind of on a regular basis over and over again, helps me and I feel have just kind of a perspective on what it is. So there's some value there. But if it's making the process harder on staff or more difficult or, or taking extra time or putting us in a disadvantaged position, I'm okay with that too. So more of a comment than a question there. But I will say the way we're doing it is not totally valueless. There is some value.
So John, I suggested to Mark this morning a way to address that very issue. I think that as part of Mark's report at the end of the meeting, he ought to go ahead and list the ones that he approved administratively, which would have come to us previously as either a resolution or a consent agenda item. Because I think there is true value to our citizens' hearing that we're spending $450,000 on salt and X number of dollars on sewer line replacement. And so even, even if we're not taking, you know, action on it, it still gets the information out to the public of, here's what we're spending your money on.
Right. Yeah, well, I would, I would agree, and I think that's a reasonable solution too. So I wouldn't have any problem with that at all.
Okay, David?
Just so you're aware, we also put the, we often award these on BidNet, so the public sees it there as well.
And I, and I go to BidNet all the time. I want you to know, it is my bedtime reading. David Jones?
Thank you. I'm glad I know what BidNet is now. I appreciate your comments, Mayor, and Councilmember Marriott. I think those are. Just a question for Mr. Devon. Can you, you know, looking at some of these examples of things, and you know, you look at anything, oh, salt and trucks, and it all makes sense. But have you thought through anything that would come to you under that $500,000 limit where you're, where you might say, whoa, wait a minute. I think I need to get some, you know, some additional feedback on it. I'm assuming that you will do that just because that's your, but I'm just wondering if there's, if you've thought of anything that, yeah. If there's anything that kind of just popped into your head that said, you know what? There's always going to be this particular issue that I think I'm always going to go to council on regardless of. It's a little crystal ball question, I think.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. You know, a lot of, a lot of those decisions tend to be just sort of gut instinct based on maybe conversations I've, I've heard from you or comments that you have made to me at one time. Any of you really have made to me at one time or another. So I would, I would say that I think there's a good chance that something like that could happen. Chances are, though, I would probably try to take care of it, you know, through a weekly memo or through a, bringing it up in an informal way rather than necessarily put it on the agenda. But if it was, if it was something that I felt needed to be on the agenda, we would, I would, I would certainly do that. I think, you know, the, the way I've conducted myself during the time that I've had the emergency authority is a good example of that. I've, I've tried to really review with you all the important decisions that we're making that might be, you know, kind of bumping up against that, that, that emergency authority limit in order to make sure that you're fully informed and that, you know, you know what's, what's going on. And I think, I think that's something, you know, frankly, sometimes that is advice I get from either Lori or Brian Archer or somebody else who also will recognize a situation where we should be communicated to you and let you know what's going on.
Yeah, no, and I, you've done an awesome job. The entire team has done a great job during this emergency period. And I know it was kind of, it's one of those questions that's hard to answer. I guess my, my feedback would be, yeah, always feel like you can come and ask, and it sounds would be part of your plan. And my sense is that this is going to be fine and that will, if it, if it helps to save a week and a half here and there, then that's, that's fine. So again, appreciate the information and the clarifications on those.
Thank you. And to clarify, we also had that thought, Brian Archer and I had specifics that we would have come to you even if it was on the approved budget. For instance, the restoration of the trolley, that would have come via, via resolution.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say, Mayor, that I agree with you and Mr. Marriott. I think that there is benefit by notifying the public of what, how things are being spent. But I don't, I don't necessarily feel it has to come to us through resolution. So I'm, I'm comfortable
Good.
with your suggestion.
Okay, and everybody okay with the other recommendations? Don't see any other, I've seen head nods and some thumbs raised. Nancy Allen, I want to thank you for your work along on this. You're doing the heavy lifting and trying to make Brian Archer look good, which is tough work. But I am very impressed by what you've done in your time with us in terms of the recognition that we're getting as a city. And congratulations, great work. You're a great example of why we've got a terrific team here at the City of Arvada, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very, oh, oh, yeah, you too, Brian. Okay, I think that completes that workshop. We'll move on now to short-term rentals. Mr. Devon or Rachel, whoever's going to take that one?
I believe we're going to start with Ryan Stachowski. I believe he'll introduce this item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Another topic for you, short-term rentals. So we have an ensemble of people who are going to be presenting tonight. Rob Smetana, our planning manager, Sergeant Timothy Evans, Gabe Evans, from our code enforcement lead, Lori Graham from our city attorney's office. And the plan tonight is to go through the PowerPoint to say, this is where the ordinance is, is as drafted as it was presented to council, I believe, on the October 21st city council meeting. And then following that meeting, you had some additional questions and follow-up that you wanted. We'll go through that and then discuss all those points. But to go through the ordinance and give a little timeline of where we've been, I'll introduce Rob Smetana to lead us through that discussion.
Very good.
Do you have our PowerPoint? Thank you.
All right, so I'll give, as Ryan mentioned, just a little brief history of the project. We started out talking about short-term rentals as part of the land development code, starting in 2018 when we met with some interested parties. We also had some information at Open Houses as we discussed the entire land development code. But over time, we determined it was probably more of a higher priority than the full land development code. And in 2019, right before we had these workshops in June and August, we, council directed us to split out the land, the short-term rentals from the land development code. So we did hold those couple of workshops where we presented some information to you about what other cities were doing in terms of short-term rentals. And we crafted an ordinance, which I'll talk about in a minute. We took that ordinance to Planning Commission in September of 2017, September of 2019, sorry. And they did recommend approval of a short-term rental ordinance with one modification that we had discussed with council, which was rather than allowing it to be whole-house rental, the Planning Commission recommended that there be a primary resident in order to operate a short-term rental. That ordinance was then brought to council in October of 2019. And council, of course, was split on whether to allow a whole-house rental or to restrict it to a resident operator. Next slide, please. So the ordinance that was presented at the time allowed for short-term rentals in all the residential zone districts. And that would be the new residential zone districts of the new code that you'll be seeing next week. But that would, we would allow them in single-family detached units, duplex units, townhome units, and owner-occupied multifamily units. In an apartment building, it would be allowed, but with some conditions, which I'll talk about here shortly. An additional parking space was required for each unit to accommodate the guests that would be associated with the short-term rental. And they could only be rented at one party, to one party at a time. So that would preclude somebody from renting out two rooms simultaneously. Next slide, please. So there would be a limit of one short-term rental for, for each property. So as an example, there, a short-term rental would have to be in either the primary resident, residence or an ADU if there was an ADU on the property. Renters would be allowed to operate a short-term rental with the permission of the property owner. And in multifamily apartment buildings versus the owner-occupied multifamily. And in multifamily apartment buildings versus the owner occupied multifamily, uh, for apartment buildings, the owner would, the owner of the complex or a building would only be allowed to operate one short term rental in a building or a community. That way, it wouldn't turn into a de facto uh, short term hotel situation. Uh, and then any uh, short term rentals would be subject to HOA regulations. So if a right, if an HOA precluded uh, short term rentals through their CCNRs covenants, uh, then they still would not be allowed to operate even if the city did allow short term rentals. Uh, next slide, please. In terms of responsibilities, we wanted to make sure there was some oversight into the short term rentals, whether it was a resident uh, operation or a whole house rental. So an owner had to be available within a certain timeframe uh, to respond to any issues that might have might come up as far as a guest concern, um, issues with the rental, issues with neighbors. Um, and they would need to provide a brochure within the short term rental with that contact information. Uh, beyond the contact, there also needed to be a person who was located within in 30 miles of the short term rental so that they could actually get to the property for any significant issues and that that person should be authorized to make any decisions for the owner if it was not the owner themselves and it was a representative. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, short term rentals would be licensed and the property owner or renter would be allowed to uh, get a license and the renter would be with the authorization of the property owner. Uh, they must identify what portion of the dwelling unit or property was going to be used for the short term rental. They would need to indicate that they meet the parking requirements. They would need to self self certify that they meet all the applicable codes and including safety standards. Uh, they would pay the city's lodgers lodgers tax. And the license would not be transferable with the sale of the property. So if a property sold, the new owner would have to come in and get a license again. Uh, there were penalties for any violations of the ordinance and the permit could be revoked for cause by the director. Uh, next slide, please. So I'll turn it back over to Ryan. He'll talk about a little more information that's been collected since we had the last discussion.
Thanks, Rob. So this section, what we really wanted to talk about was that was the ordinance as presented, and we just wanted to do a kind of a high level overview to kind of remind people of where we landed the last time we discussed it. Um, where we got hung up, for lack of a better phrase, is that there was a discussion amongst council between the primary use versus the non-primary use. And then also, as it related to the use of marijuana with inside the primary residence and um, wi- within the within, not the primary residence, within the short term rental. So we want to talk about those things. And then also, when we were discussing this ordinance before, we were still at a fairly high level and we were still in a process where we were considering our internal operations and implementation. And um, since that time, we've been able to dive a little bit deeper into what is the cost of implementation and really kind of understanding the the different steps that we'll go through, the revenue that's going to be generated and then the costs of uh, of implementation. And and I want to talk a little bit about that as well because I think that could have some bearing on some direction that we get. Um, so the the points that we're going to talk about in this next section is the primary versus the non-primary and what impact does it have on the community? Also, kind of in addition to that is if we allowed a non-primary resident um, to be limited on the number of of short term rentals they could have in the Arvada, in Arvada, what would that effect be? There was some discussion amongst council or some questions that they were asking is if somebody lived outside of the city of Arvada, could they have one uh, short term rental? But if somebody was inside the city of Arvada and Arvada resident, could they have multiple uh, short term rentals? And so we're going to talk about that a little bit. Then the cost, then specifically, um, we're going to talk about marijuana and we're going to talk about it from two different aspects. One is the legal aspect of what does the constitution say and what do we have the rights to do as a a city? And then there's the practical side of the enforcement. The what does it actually mean to have a a police officer go to a short term rental and um, kind of enforce on an alleged case of of marijuana usage? And then we're going to go through a couple of recommendations based on that. So next slide, please. So what this slide does, and we don't have all the information from everybody. We've been able to um, reach out to our counterparts. But um, these are the the major cities in the Front Range area that all allow uh, short term rentals. And the most notable and interesting one on this list is Colorado Springs. And Colorado Springs is interesting because they're the only one in the area that does not have the requirement for short term for a primary residence um, with their short term rental. And so we, I was able to get ahold of their code enforcement person and really say, you know, how does this kind of change the character of the community uh, by not having that primary residence? And they were saying, you know, they have seen some issues um, related to code enforcement, but um, but they haven't been pervasive and they haven't been chronic. So um, the the benefit that they said that they've seen is similar to our ordinance is that they have a kind of a local representative requirement as well. And so uh, they have to be within one hour's distance and be able to be able to respond and those types of things. And they said, in every case, uh, in the in the experience that they've had, which is about a year since I've talked to them, which is about February, they said that once they were able to call that local person, they were able to nip all issues in the bud and they it wasn't a repeat um, occurrence. The other question that is related to it, because it does not require uh, the uh, primary residence restriction, is that where are you going to get a bunch of investors to come in and uh, buy up several houses within Colorado Springs and um, start a a kind of a new industry? And they said that they've really not seen that, that they have a few local Colorado Spring residents that own multiple short term rentals, but uh, not, uh, you know, large conglomerates um, from out of state or or larger um, real estate holding companies that would buy up several houses and um, have them start that that kind of is an industry. They said that was something that they were concerned about and that they wanted to look at. And so they were specifically paying attention to it, but they have not noticed it. Um, the other uh, community members, um, I think Boulder is certainly the outlier there in which they get so many complaints to short term rentals. One of the reasons why they have more complaints than other communities is because Boulder actually, they have 850 short term rentals um, that are have license. However, they believe that they have closer to 1,200 or or higher actual short term rentals. So a lot of people are calling on those to enforce when they don't believe that they um, have a license. And because of the university and because of the high cost of housing and some of those things are the reasons why they believe that they're getting more um, complaints um, about that in Boulder. If you go to the next slide, please, Bruce. Uh, so the next slide shows what are our other communities in the area uh, doing about short term rentals? And you can see that our our most local um, neighbors are are not permitting uh, them at this time. However, um, they're all considering them in one state or another and they're in different parts of the process, just like us, of kind of considering things and not sure exactly where they're going to land. Um, but with the code enforcement officers that we were able to um, uh, speak to, uh, both of them were indicating that they had relatively low response uh, of code enforcement as it relates to specifically short term rentals. Um, Sergeant Evans, are you on the phone or on the meeting? And can you speak to the code enforcement cases that we've received as it relates to um, Arvada short term rentals?
Absolutely. So it's Sergeant Evans here with Neighborhood Services over Code Enforcement and Animal Management. Um, for the last couple of months, we just went back through our database and we looked at complaints that we had received regarding short term rentals. And we've been averaging about 20 complaints a month, uh, but similar to what Mr. Stachowski had said, uh, a lot of these are based on the fact that short term rentals currently are not allowed in the city. So the vast majority of the complaints that we are getting are revolving around somebody reporting um, an unauthorized rental operating and then they want, excuse me, they would like us to go out um, and then do some enforcement uh, to bring them into compliance. Uh, one of the things that we had discussed uh, was moving forward, if this was to be, uh, this ordinance was to be passed and short term rentals were authorized, um, would there be any increase in neighbors who don't uh, maybe like living next to a short term rental? And so maybe they're not complaining on the rental itself, uh, but they're just subjecting that property to uh, an increased level of scrutiny and using that as an opportunity to um, call in any complaints, regardless of whether or not they're related to uh, short term rentals. So we really weren't able to see one way or the other, uh, based on our data, if that was uh, going to be a thing or not. Uh, but it definitely is something um, in the back of our minds that, you know, we we just don't know um, how many of our citizens would do that or not if short term rentals were to be authorized.
Thank you. All right, next slide, please, Bruce. So i- i- if if the city council um, looked at an ordinance and I'm, I I always get these confused in my head. It goes back and forth. That said, uh, non-primary residence was allowed, but they limited to one per applicant. Uh, then there would be one license per applicant and regardless of where you lived. If you lived in the city of Arvada or you lived out out of the city or out of state, you could get one license per applicant because you didn't need to be the primary residence. However, a council conversation or consideration was, well, if you were the Arvada resident, could you have more than one license? And so we would say, okay, Mr. Smith, you live in Arvada and um, you can have one that's your uh, primary residence or there, or you can have multiple of other homes that you own in the city of Arvada. And so one question that that we would ask is, is there a limit of how many that could be? Um, that uh, it could be a question that we answer later on. But we also want to just discuss the the technical challenges of what we would need to do to actually implement this. What's the practical side of this? And I think one of the biggest challenges that stands out in staff's mind is that if everybody was allowed to have one license in the city of Arvada and you could limit it per applicant, that's fine. But if this was an investment property and those investment properties were all signed up other as LLCs, I say, living in a different community could say, Arvada one, Arvada two, down the road, all different LLCs, and I would still only be getting one license uh, per each one of my things, which would be very hard for us to track whether all those LLCs was an Arvada resident or not. And so there's administrative tracking concern about kind of going down this path and kind of creating two classes of uh, licenses. And then also the enforcement of that, of actually tracking down and understanding who was the registered agent of that LLC, who were we enforcing against, those types of things? And and was the effort going into all that enforcement and all that tracking really worth it from a a standpoint as it related to um, how we wanted to set up the ordinance? So uh, probably more discussion on that, but I just wanted to lay the groundwork at least of of that discussion and that consideration in the non-primary resident kind of bucket of considerations. Uh, next slide, please. So now we get into a little bit of the cost of implementation. And uh, this is an important slide because what it shows you is what does it cost the city of Arvada to actually uh, implement this? But also, what is the the perceived revenue that would be coming in annually uh, based on our current lodging tax, our sales tax rate and the um, uh, the license fees that we would um, uh, collect? So uh, there's really kind of three phases that the city goes through in order to be able to implement this ordinance. Number one is the planning phase where it would come into the Community Economic Development Department to make sure that we understood that it was meeting those planning requirements. It was in an ADU that we knew which part of the house it was being used at, um, whether it was a whole house or not whole house, um, whether or not the additional parking space was there, those types of things. So we would do that review and we would charge um, a hundred dollars per license for that staff review. Um, the the next part of that is, say, we have an approved license. Then it would go over to our finance department and they would do the enforcement and the tracking of the sales tax and the the ones that didn't pay their sales tax, that they would follow up and and say, you need to remit. And then the ones that don't remit, then we would kind of track those individuals and and go down um, a- and so that they can remit. And then there's another component of it is that we don't necessarily know, unless there's a complaint, um, where short term rentals are. You can't necessarily, you can go into Airbnb, for example, and say that there are 220 options or whatnot in the city of Arvada, but you wouldn't necessarily know those address and who the owners of those were in order for us to sign or send them a compliance letter. And so we would be hiring a third party sort of compliance where they go and scrub Airbnb and other sites, that they go and get those addresses and those types of things. Then we would have more ability to send them letters of saying, hey, we understand you're operating a short term rental in Arvada. Please comply and 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 do those things. And so there's a cost to that. And then there's also the code enforcement piece uh, of going in, as Sergeant Evans just described, of going in and, you know, enforcing on short term rentals or enforcing on other aspects of short term rentals, like we we don't like that short term rentals are going on and so we think that they have a weed issue or an or or a noise ordinance issue or those types of things. And so um, we put those calculations at roughly $92,000 for soft costs and then additional $22,000 in um, hard costs. And then we go over to the revenue side. And based on a number of estimated units of 300 units, we got that number from a third party who kind of did an initial scrubbing of how many units they believe were operating in the city of Arvada currently and implemented. They also gave us some calculations about how many nights they thought that they were having rented uh, the average cost of a rental in Arvada and so on. And then we were able to use our lodging tax and sales tax that are both applied to those um, rental rates and uh, create a calculation of about $40,000 a year. Plus, the 300 times hundred dollars per license gets us $30,000 a year, uh, which nets us a revenue of $70,000 per year.
Okay, take a breath, Ryan, and I'll let Mayor Protem Dot Miller ask a question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think you answered it in the very last sentence. I was waiting patiently to see if you you answered it. And it my question was, is that 300 units annually? As I, when I looked at this, you know, when I first got this notebook, I'm like, 300 annually? Or everything else said annually, but the 300 didn't. So I couldn't figure out if that's what you are basing your cost on or not.
Correct. So um, we require them to re-up their license each year. And so they would come in and pay us the new hundred dollar license fee um, at 300. And then uh, the 40,000 is kind of the ongoing estimate of the lodging tax.
So and the only other thing when I, when I was looking at the break even options on this was, I don't know if on some of the um, cities, Boulder and Denver, they charge an application fee as well. So I thought that might be another way to increase the fees a little bit, a one-time application fee versus increasing that annual license to 250. That's a a big jump from 100 to 250, you know, happy to go either way on that because I want to cover costs. So if it takes $250 to have a short term rental, then absolutely, you know, I'd pay the $250 annually. That's, that's not a lot, but um, that was my question. Thank you.
Sure. So um, and you bring up a good point because I I meant in an earlier slide to highlight some of the costs for the um, for the uh, different licenses. I will say that it is a recent change uh, to the uh, license fee plus the um, annual fee on that when we checked these numbers a few months ago, those communities didn't have both fees. And so I think that a lot of communities are kind of catching up. Uh, but that's not something that at the beginning of the year they had. And so they're looking at a ways of doing a little bit more cost recovery. So one of the things to consider is that um, there's benefit to compliance of having people have license because we know who they are. And then if we have, we have that person that we can call within an hour's reach to be able to come and um, resolve a matter for us if that if that matter is. And that that could be worth, that's valuable to us. And so the the higher the fee you go, the the, I don't And so the, the higher the fee you go, the, the, I don't want to say the less likely, but you, you lose compliance with it because of the, the level of the, the fee. And so we would like to have as high as compliance of people getting licenses and that's really important to us, but cost recovery is also important to us. One of the other things, well, let's, well, I, I'll share it here. So we can certainly talk about the lodging tax because one of the reasons why our number is where it is is because it's based on a lodging tax. And so changing that equation, which would require going out to a vote of the people at some future date, could change the, the math in the equation. The other thing is, is that early on in the process, we had some reservations about working with Airbnb directly that would allow us to have, instead of us collecting the, the taxes from each one of these additional license holders individually, which increases our cost because you have to track down 300 people as opposed to one people, we had some concerns with the relationship of just having Airbnb remit the taxes and having all those people remit to Airbnb. But since the, the kind of start of this conversation, I think some of the concerns in the contract relationships between cities and Airbnb have been more favorable to cities. And so I think that that's something that we would continue to explore because I think that that has the potential of helping us reduce a significant portion of that finance cost that could help us get closer to break even. Next slide, please. So at this slide, I'm going to introduce Lori Graham, or one of our senior attorneys, to discuss the specific legal considerations that the constitution brings related to that consideration of whether or not we should restick marijuana, restrict marijuana use within a, a short-term rental. And then following that slide, Sergeant Evans is going to talk about kind of the practical side from a police department perspective. So Ms. Graham.
You're muted. You'll unmute, please. There you go.
Sorry about that. I was just saying good evening, so you didn't miss anything. Anyway, good evening. Last time that we had this conversation and the ordinance failed, there was some discussion about adding to the ordinance that we would not allow use of marijuana within the short-term rental units. And one of the things that I said at that time, I said two things. First, I said it might run afoul of the Colorado constitution and we may therefore pull a lawsuit. And second, I said it might be very difficult to enforce that. And I'm not going to talk about the enforcement part. I was just going to do a quick rundown of the, of the constitutional amendment. The Colorado constitution was amended in 2013 to allow personal use of marijuana, not, not medical, but recreational. And the amendment includes two things that would make it very difficult for us to defend a law that says you can't do it, or an ordinance that says you cannot engage in personal use of marijuana. First of all, the amendment, the constitutional amendment says that this question is not a local question. So when it says, what that means is it's a state question and the state constitution says you can engage in personal use of marijuana. Local issues are usually such as zoning, those are clearly local, or we have arguments with the state about what is local, but in this particular situation, the constitution itself says, not local, you don't win. The second one is that we say that, I'm sorry, the amendment says that we cannot pass a law that limits or limits consumption or makes it an offense under the law of any locality. And this would be a law of a locality. And finally, it says that we can't make a law that such, such consumption may not be conducted openly or publicly or in a manner that endangers others. So the question would be, if you're engaging in use of marijuana within a private unit, it probably doesn't run afoul of the law because it's, it's not being conducted openly or publicly. So there's a lot of issues with trying to enforce this. I think the, the final point that I have is that, I forgot what my final point was. Because it's been a while since I've talked legally. I apologize for that. I just, oh, I, I remembered, I do apologize. This hasn't been tested at all, so I apologize. There has, there's no case law on it, we have no idea how that would go. We don't know which side the court would go on and we would be the forerunners in trying to test the constitutional amendment. So I apologize for my little fumbling there, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Bruce, can you go to the next slide?
And hello again, it's Sergeant Evans with the Police Department, just talking about the enforcement considerations for this slide. And so really, one of the big issues that you would run into if this were to actually become an ordinance would be just how does this information even make it to a police officer in the first place? Because marijuana is legal in the state of Colorado, if a citizen were to call dispatch and say, hey, I have a complaint about marijuana being smoked, it would take a very articulate citizen and a very savvy dispatcher to understand that this complaint is actually based upon an ordinance in the city of Arvada, rather than just screening this complaint out and saying, hey, sorry, marijuana is legal in the state of Colorado. Our dispatcher's dispatched for over a dozen different jurisdictions. And so there'd be a very high likelihood that they may not have that detailed knowledge of, of our ordinances to realize that this actually is something that could be referred on to a police officer for enforcement action. But even if that first hurdle was overcome and this complaint was to be dispatched to a police officer, the very first thing the police officer would have to do would be verify that the property in question is in fact a short-term rental and the person smoking marijuana was a short-term renter as opposed to either the primary occupant or non-renting guest of the occupant. And that would be based on having access to the actual permit that says that this is a permitted short-term rental. And that's something that most of the police officers don't have access to. And even if they were to be given access, I don't know how much time, given some of the other call loads, that they would be able to dedicate to trying to research and see whether or not a property is in fact a duly licensed, short-term rental location. And then even if that hurdle was overcome, there's still no obligation that, you know, a police officer's knocking on the door, there's no obligation that that individual inside would have to come to the door or cooperate with the police officer. And our ability to then turn around and go seek some sort of search warrants for that premise would be very, very low, not to mention the fact that we don't know how long the short-term renter is going to be staying there. So if they fly back to Florida or Wisconsin or wherever they're from, by the time that our warrant comes through, it's essentially a, a move point as far as getting a warrant. As the fourth bullet point says up there, it's, it's, you know, unfortunately just going to be a lower priority call for the police to try to go enforce a marijuana ordinance. And then even if all of this was to work out perfectly, there's always the question about, as the previous slide was briefed, whether or not we can even secure a conviction based on state law. And if a conviction was handed down, how much time and effort and resources would the courts be willing to expend to try to issue a warrant or try to get somebody from out of state to come back to take care of a marijuana restriction on a short-term rental? And then we would see similar hurdles from a code enforcement perspective. My code enforcement officers would obviously have much easier access to, to verify that this was a short-term rental location, but we would still have the same problem as far as actually getting out there, conducting a, an investigation and verifying that the person smoking marijuana was in fact a renter, which would be illegal versus the primary occupant or a, a non-renting guest of the occupant. So for a variety of reasons, it would be very, very difficult to actually enforce a restriction on marijuana in short-term rentals. Next slide. And then I think Mr. Sutelsky is going to take it from there.
Yes, thank you, Sergeant Evans. So with that, that's generally the information that we wanted to present to you tonight in, with questions after our, our, our previous presentation. The next slide's really kind of talk a little bit about the team's recommendation. And so obviously you have an ordinance in front of you that was presented back in October. That ordinance at a high level has no primary residence restriction, allows multiple licenses and no marijuana restrictions. You could certainly adopt that as drafted. You could also consider an adoption with some modifications, adding a primary residency component. That is something that the team is recommending. We believe when we went through some of our conversations with the Land Development Code Advisory Board and had some conversations there, that was something that that board was recommending and feel that, that it would be appropriate in this case. Allowing Arvada residents to have more than one short-term rental, the team is not recommending this, mostly for the reasons of just, it would be very hard to enforce, it would very, be very hard to, to do the tracking on those things. And so that's the reason why we're not recommending that. And then for the reasons stated by Ms. Graham and Sergeant Evans, we're also not recommending the restriction of marijuana use in short-term rentals. Next slide, Bruce. Additionally, in terms of a cost recovery model, no charge to, or no change to the license fee, we are recommending just going forward with the $100. That's the cost recovery for the planning portion. We're not recommending the, the 250 and the reason why is because we believe the lower number will allow us to be a little bit more compliant with the number of people actually getting licenses and we believe that information is valuable to us for a number of different reasons. We think that city council could and maybe should consider a lodging tax increase sometime in the future. Certainly that doesn't need to be, that's not an immediate need for this. And then also, we would explore partnering with the short-term rental vendors, maybe to be able to reduce some of our own costs in the future to, to do some better cost recovery. So with that, you can go to the next slide and I believe it's just questions, that's the end of our presentation.
Could you go back to, oops? Sorry, I got kicked out of the meeting somehow.
You're still in.
I'm back in. Okay, I was out for a second. Could you go back a slide? Maybe two slides? Go back one more. One more, please. No, I'm sorry, one more forward now. Okay, I'm trying to understand primary residences. Primary residence. Can people rent the entire unit or not without the owners being present?
So currently, no primary residence. So there's not, it's not a primary residence restriction, so you are able to rent the whole house currently.
But you're not recommending that.
We are not. We're recommending, well, and that, no, let me be clear. Primary residence doesn't mean that you can't do the whole house. You, if I lived in a house, it was my primary residence and I had that, and I, I went out of town for three weeks and I wasn't occupying it, as long as it was still my primary residence, I, you could rent my whole house while I'm gone. So it's a difference between a whole house rental and primary residence, so.
Okay. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. My question is along the same lines, Mr. Sutelsky. Is there, so I, it's hard for me to get behind the primary residence piece of it just because I'm a BRBO, Airbnb user and I just would never, ever, ever rent for a place with somebody that was living there. But do you have a limit on how long you can be out of town, a definition on what, what primary residence means? Can I, can I just go travel for the whole year and rent it out for a whole year?
So I believe Rob can answer that question because we've done, we've done some research about what other communities say is a primary residence in order to qualify that, so Rob, please go.
Yeah, so basically other communities, there's a couple of ways they've approached it. They've said, you've got to prove that, you know, it is your residence through providing utility bills to show that you, you generally get your mail there, so it's not just like a secondary home. That's one way of showing that. Some other communities, it's a little more vague, but they basically say you've got to show that you're, you reside at the, at the home for six months and one day out of the year. So there's a couple of different ways to look at it, but primarily it's been through providing, as far as we could tell when we did the research, providing utility bills, showing that your driver's license is, is that address, things of that nature.
Thank you. So that's, that's the only staff recommendation that's hard for me to get behind. I, I can get behind all the other ones, that's just the hard, hard one for me.
Okay, David Jones.
Thank you. So the same, same, same subject. So what benefit is there to the city to have that requirement of it being a primary residence? Where do we think, what do we think we gain or have control of with that requirement?
Well, so I, I'll, I'll answer a little bit and I'll let Rob answer as well. I believe that the community conversation that we heard about this is that there's a perception that there is more pride in ownership, that if you are going to be coming back to that house and you know that you're going to be living there or whatnot, that you're going to want to make sure that you're enforcing on perhaps people who are misbehaving or your renters and those types of things. And that it also lends better to helping keep the fabric of the community together. And so if you know your neighbors, then you know, hey, this happened while you were out of town and I know you're allowed to have a short-term rental, but can you, you know, account for that? And if you don't have that connection to the person that's, who is leading that short-term rental because they're out of state or not available, then that there is a perception that you don't have that connection and that it could deteriorate kind of the, the continuity of neighborhoods. And so I think through the community conversations, that's where we were feeling that people were giving us feedback that led us to make that recommendation. Rob, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just the one other piece that we did hear from some residents were that if you did not require the primary residence and had the whole-house rental, you could start taking a lot of units that could be rented and be affordable units or taking them out of the rental market for the long-term rental market and putting them into the short-term rental market. And having a resident requirement really does limit somebody to being able to control one or to have one short-term rental versus, as Ryan discussed earlier, you know, if you don't have that requirement, you could have one person owning multiple properties and kind of taking those, the concern was taking those properties out of the long-term rental market and putting them into the short-term rental market.
Okay, Bob Pfeifer.
Thank you. Am I on? Because I know somebody keeps muting me. All right. So Ryan, since you've been doing your research and probably refreshing your memory to last October 21st, and we have a new council member, do you mind kind of giving a little background on the 3-3 vote and then how we went from it failing to where we are today? So I know we hit a few key things that were discussed during that meeting, but I think where, what I'm lost a little bit is this was failed and then it came back up, back up to us and I just want to know how it got here and make sure Lauren's up to speed with us as well.
Sure. So, and, and you can, others that were there can fix my recollection, but we presented the ordinance as described by Rob in, in the beginning. And I believe that there is a sticking point and we had two amendments that were proposed. One was related to marijuana and one was related to primary residency. And I believe both of those failed on maybe 3-3 votes, both of them as well, although they could have been different 3-3s.
Yeah, for different reasons.
Yeah, for different reasons. And so And so, our, the ordinance is drafted and was presented by staff, did not have the primary residence. The planning commission recommendation did. I cannot recall who made the motions and who voted each way, but there was a vote to say primary residence, that failed on the three-three, and then there was a vote to do the marijuana, and that failed on the three-three. And so, then the full motion was called, and obviously, that failed. And I'll probably get in trouble for this, but Ms. Miller was absent, and so, I do recall that, so.
We could blame her.
I'm not blaming anybody.
I was so mad I missed that meeting.
I'm sure we all got texts the next morning. I think I did.
I think I had texts that night.
So let me, let me just say, I think I was one of the ones that said no, but I will say that I, I like the feel of where we're going with this better. You know, I think I could get to a better place with what the staff's recommendation around adopting the ordinance with modifications. I know the primary residency is a concern with some of my peers, but you know, when I look at the numbers and I look at the research they did, really, Colorado Springs sounds like they're the only one that doesn't require it, but yet, there is still a lot of, you know, short-term rentals with primary residency requirements. So I mean, there must be a market for it to be there. So I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I'm sure with the ADUs, and I see more and more ADUs seem to be popping up, I think that's a great idea to use for the ADU. And I do, I do agree with some of the concerns around taking long-term rentals, you know, away out of the market for short-term. I, I, I remember one of our council members, it might have been John Marriott talking about the snowbirds, or even you, Mayor, about, you know, hey, I leave for, I'm thinking of, you know, Mr. Matthews, you know, he goes to Arizona for six months and comes back, and he may want to rent his, rent his property here in, in Colorado for six months while he's gone. So I'm happy with what you presented, Ryan. I think you did a good job, and I can tell you, if we can go down the path of what you're recommending, I can skip behind this and support this direction. So, sorry, I'm not looking at the camera, I'm looking at the book. So thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Nancy Ford?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, Ryan. I can definitely get behind this ordinance. I've been speaking to a few constituents, number of them, and I think they all would feel more comfortable with the primary residence requirement. And I also think it better aligns with our community vitality and neighborhood engagement, a strategic goal, and so I'm, I'm pleased with it and could vote for it.
Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. So a couple of comments. I can't be behind the restriction on it only being allowed in your primary residence. I think there's a couple of things I would, comments I'd make about that. One is, we have only 150 hotel rooms in a city of 120,000 people, and if you've ever tried to book somebody in that hotel room, if you're not in that hotel, if you're not doing it at least a month in advance, your chances are pretty small. And I think like Ms. Miller said, and my family does the same thing, we use private residences when we go on vacation more often than not, we rarely stay in hotels anymore, because the private residence thing provides a far better alternative. My experience has been, everywhere that we go, that we're not staying in someone's house that they're either currently living in or that they live in. They're generally properties that someone has purchased to manage as an investment property or as a, as a short-term rental property, and my experience is, they're always the nicest house in the neighborhood. The expectations of the vacation travelers are pretty high, and the, that, that, these are not rundown properties at all, these are pretty high-end properties. I'll also mention that, you know, the current best data we have is that there may be 300 short-term rentals in Arvada. I think we have something like 46,000 domestic units in Arvada, so that's far under 1% of our housing stock is short-term rental. So as far as taking affordable rentals off the market by allowing short-term rentals that are not your primary residence, I don't think the numbers show that that's anywhere even, even close. So I, I think that particular, on that particular point, I think that, that we should have some way of allowing short-term rentals for properties that is not the house that you live in. And whether that be limited to only one, and Ryan mentioned some of the difficulties of that, that people may hide behind LLCs or other structures to, to get around that or, you know, that, that's one way of limiting it. Another way of limiting it may be that if you have a property that you'd like to rent out as a short-term rental, limiting the number of nights it may be rented per year. You know, as far as making sure that it's not just a revolving door, if that limitation were 250 nights a year or something like that, I think we haven't explored that, but something in that order might, might make sense as well. As far as the other recommendations, I don't have any problem with any of those. The hundred-dollar license fee, I'm fine with that. I think it, I think it's totally fine for that to even be higher, but, but I think a reasonable license fee is, is important because you'll get compliance. I think, I think increasing the lodging tax in Arvada is also warranted. I think that's something we should do. I believe we need to be strategic about when to do that. I certainly wouldn't recommend us doing that now from a strategic standpoint, but, but I think that's, that's something we should do as well. And I think the thing to remember is, we currently have essentially no restrictions at all, other, other than just folks who get, get complained about by their neighbors. And we've had very little, you know, very little problems from that. And so, I don't see that there's lots of problems we're sitting here trying to solve. If we were having hundreds upon hundreds of code enforcement complaints attributed to short-term rentals, that would be one thing, but, but that's not the case in our city nor any of the cities around us. So I think we don't necessarily have a problem there to solve, and I would encourage us to, to look at how can we do this and allow short-term rentals both in your primary residence, but also maybe with some common sense limitations in, in housing that is not your primary residence as well.
Okay, Lauren Simpson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I actually want to compound upon what John was saying. This is something that I've thought about for a long time. I too am an avid Airbnb user. I use it quite frequently for both business travel as well as personal travel. I've never had a problem. Airbnb actually, as a corporation, does a great job of vetting their homeowners. You have all kinds of options as a user that you can determine the quality, such as an Airbnb, a super host, somebody who's been vetted by, to extra levels and whatnot. So I definitely agree partnering with the STR vendors, 100%. I think we must do that. In terms of what Mr. Marriott and Ms. Miller were saying, I, I agree that I don't know if I necessarily want to limit it exclusively to primary residence, simply because, as they said, it doesn't, it can be a bit creepy staying in somebody's house, just to throw it out there, it can be a bit creepy. And then, two, not to get too much into hypotheticals, but I could easily see a situation in which two people get married, they don't want to sell one home, but they don't want to do long-term rentals either, because there's a whole nother level of responsibility that comes with having long-term renters in your properties, and so they just want to rent the other house out and use it as this. And so, maybe we could look at something of a primary residence plus one, and you tie that plus one to the primary residence, which must be in Arvada. That way, we don't have LLCs coming in and 1-1-1-1-1. We could actually coordinate it directly to the other primary residence, just as an idea. So more than happy to discuss. I wanted out there that I support the, this, and so, however, the rest of council feels that we need to proceed, I'm on board. But absolutely, that's just kind of a compromise I was thinking might be able to work and would look forward to staff's feedback on the logistics of that. And like Bob, I'm looking at my book, so I apologize, but I'm looking, looking down. And then, I agree, licensing fee, maybe even raising it to 150, just to get a little bit of that cost recovery without making it too far out of reach. And I agree with Mr. Marriott as well, that council needs to look at increasing the lodging tax for the city. That brings in dollars to our city from people who are staying here from out of state and, or from out of city, and so that benefits us to no cost to Arvada residents, which I appreciate. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
Thank you. And really, Mr. Marriott and Ms. Simpson just covered the, the two things that I was going to say. I don't, it's not a secret, but I am a short-term rental owner, not in the city of Arvada, but in another state and city. And one of the things that my insurance company precludes me to do is to rent it 365 days a year. It's not my primary residence, but I have a limit, I can only rent it six months of the year in order for insurance paid on it. And so, and that's all governed through a rental log that my management company provides to me, that I provide to the insurance company. So I think the number of nights per year that Mr. Marriott suggested, I think that might be another way around the conversation of a primary residence. And then, I really liked what Ms. Simpson said, because one of my constituents reached out to me with that very example. They actually have two homes, and I'm assuming that they still do, but this was going, you know, this was back when we were talking about this in the fall, and they, they thought, well, hey, we've got these two houses in Arvada now, let's just rent one and do it a short-term rental. And so, that was the exact example that I was going to use of someone in our city who wants to stay in our city, but happens to have two rental prop, or have two properties that they wanted to, to maximize both of them. So I, I struggle, I probably, I couldn't get behind the, the primary residence restriction, but would hope that we could maybe look at a couple of these other things that have been discussed as possible alternatives. Thank you.
I don't see other hands, so I'll chime in now. First of all, I was one of the troublemakers on the marijuana issue last time. I, I will accept the staff team recommendation from both legal and police in terms of where the problems lie. Part of my comfort level of giving that one up is that I think the companies, Airbnb and others are doing a much better job than they used to do with the party houses. And so, I think that that issue is sort of self-resolving through the, through the private sector and just, you know, the realities for those companies that, you know, the party houses were a problem for them, and so they're self-correcting that. I, I think there's still a lot of confusion amongst ourselves as to what the primary residence thing means or doesn't mean. The reality is, if it's primary resident or not primary resident, you can still rent out the whole house. Is that right? Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, okay. We look at Denver and the problems they've had with all the, particularly lawyers and realtors, it seems, who have bought these properties and then signed an affidavit saying it was their primary residence and it wasn't, and then, you know, lawsuits were being filed and enforcement actions, and that got pretty ugly. I would tend to not be as caught up on the primary residence requirement and go more with the limitation of number of days. That might self-correct that as well. And I wouldn't be opposed to having Arvada resident plus one, so a second unit, if it's an Arvada resident, because my big issue is making sure that there's somebody who can be contacted quickly if there's a problem. And I think we've done that with the time limits, the mileage limits, in terms of having a responsible person around. So I guess those would be my comments. Mr. Pfeifer?
I just want to say I could, your recap was perfect. I could go with what you just suggested, which I think is a blend of what everyone's saying. So I would support the time limit and the one, the plus one. I think those are good compromises.
Just really quickly, to recap what I heard, I hear, I heard that consensus, general consensus, not from everybody, is to not have the primary residence restriction, however, that it would be a good idea to have some number of days limit, perhaps between six and nine months or something like that, of the number of days that can be rented out. And then, if you are a Arvada resident and you have multiple houses, then you can have a second license for that primary, for that residence. Although, there's not a primary residency restriction, and so, we may not need that plus one because we don't have a situation where one owner would be restricted to how many short-term rentals they can have.
I think we do want to address the issue of somebody not having a large number to address the issues that Nancy brought up earlier, that, you know, theoretically, you might be taking housing stock away from, from folks. What, where are others on that one? Yeah, Lauren?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree entirely. That's sort of where my head was at when I was thinking of the primary residence plus one restriction, was I agree entirely with Nancy. The last thing I want is for somebody, even an Arvada resident, to buy up 10 houses and run them all with this. Our housing stock is very in demand, even with the current crisis. I expect it will continue to be in demand, and we need to ensure that options are available for all of our residents. However, I don't think that primary residence plus one would so significantly reduce the housing stock as to cause that problem. So that's kind of where I landed on that.
David Jones?
I may have a little bit of a different thought on that. I think that this actually, I think short-term rentals actually solves housing stock issue for some who may be kind of in transition or have an affordable, they're, they're looking for an affordable housing situation, and, you know, I, I think this actually solves one of those problems of affordable housing stock. So I guess, for me, I liked the plus one, but again, I don't think that it, I, I understand the concern of some, you know, somebody coming in and buying up a bunch of houses. My sense is, is that if people are doing that, really, where, in my opinion, where the, the better money is, is in the long-term renter, and they're going to have more long-term rentals than they are going to have short-term rentals, because being someone who has a short-term rental property, it's not rented 100% of the time. And I'm in a, I'm in a, an area that is a, an area where people would, you know, flock to, I'm five minutes from the beach, and it's, you know, somewhere that people would go. And even during the summertime, during the height of rental season, it's not rented every single night. So I, again, I think that most people, if they're coming in, buying up properties, they're going to be looking to do that in a long-term rental, just from a pure investment, from my perspective on a pure investment strategy.
John Marriott, would you like to comment on that?
I would. Speaking as someone who has come in and bought up all kinds of properties to rent out, I can tell you this, short-term rentals are way too hard to do a lot of them. My experience is, just like Mr. Jones just said, the, and I've owned a number of rental properties for just shy of 30 years now, and I currently own 18 rental properties, so I'm managing a reasonable handful of properties that I own. And I can tell you from personal experience, there, no way would I have more than a couple be short-term rentals, because it's too difficult, number one. Number two, Mr. Jones is exactly right, the, the money in the operation is in, is in long-term rental, not in short-term rental, that's, that's number two. But here's the other way I would, I would encourage you all to think about. The most rental houses in Arvada are people who are oftentimes what I would call an accidental landlady. Either one of their parents passed away and they inherited a house, or they, a couple got together and moved into one of the houses and had one house left. And providing additional flexibility for these people in these situations strengthens our housing mix. It doesn't hurt our housing mix. Giving people the option to, to hold a property until it's the right time for them to sell or until they have the ability to do that remodel if necessary, or whatever, whatever the reason may be, is good for the owners of those properties and good for our residents. the reason may be, is good for the owners of those properties and good for our residents. It's not negative to them. And speaking about the taking properties off the market that could be rented to low-income renters or to, for affordable housing, you know, again, right now, we are essentially unregulated, and there may be around 300 in Arvada. I would submit to you, that's the market, because it's been that way for a long time. There's no chance of there being even 3,000 short-term rentals in the city of Arvada, at least not at any one time, because they're just simply not the market for that. If that was the case, they would be here now. So the impact on our regular rental stock is, is again, significantly under 1% of the units on the market. But the flexibility for folks to short-term rent a property when they either have, you know, any, any kind of issue strengthens our neighborhood, strengthens our community. And I would look at it that way and encourage us to, to allow that, because I think it's important for folks.
Right. Bob Pfeiffer?
I lowered my hand. Thank you, though.
Okay, very good. Nancy Board?
I think that if we look at the statistics, thanks Mayor, on both the Denver market and the Colorado Springs market, they're both under 1%. So I think that's probably consistent. We don't know what Boulder is. We don't know what Fort Collins is. I'm familiar with Fort Collins because I know that Fort Collins restricted where short-term rentals could be. Because actually, I was a person who had a second home and thought about doing short-term rentals, too, wasn't allowed in my neighborhood. I guess I'm a little curious, I, I'm not quite sure I'm understanding Mr. Marriott's statement about it strengthening neighborhoods. So maybe you could elaborate on that for me, Mr. Marriott?
Sure, Nancy, I'd be, I'd be happy to. So, you know, every day in our community, unfortunately, folks either pass away or move on to different, different living arrangements, particularly as they get elderly and their families then need to deal with those properties. And for, for the family to be able to short-term rent that for a time while they decide what they're going to do, that's positive for them. That is good for them. And, and probably puts an availability of a rental unit out on the market that otherwise wouldn't be. In my neighborhood, on my street, there currently are two houses that are empty and have both been empty for well over a year for that, due to that exact situation. Now, I don't know if either of those families would choose to short-term rent those properties, but them having another tool to deal with the real estate that they currently have in their hands is not bad for our community in any way, shape, or form. I would point out, too, like the situation Ms. Simpson brought up, when a couple gets together and marries and moves into one house and they have a second house, that their financial future may be significantly better to hold on to that second house. And having the flexibility to rent it in a number of different ways is good for them and it's good for our community. It's not harming anybody. And so I, I, I think, I think those are just a couple of reasons. I think there are many more that you could point out, where giving people the flexibility to use their property as they see fit or is most beneficial to them is good for our community, not bad.
Okay, I want to get to some closure on this in terms of, of what direction are we giving to the team moving forward with bringing forward an ordinance for us to get this thing closed out? Nancy, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one statement. So I could, I can somewhat get behind the idea of a second home like that, but I still think that it's important to look at it from the neighbor's standpoint, because when people move into a neighborhood, they are not necessarily looking, I mean, you know, from the individual's perspective, there's a benefit of being able to use your home for an economic purpose. But I still believe that when people move into neighborhoods, they're looking for the stability of consistent neighbors and not necessarily looking to move into or next to a business unless that's the specific area that they're moving into. That, that's what I'm hearing from people, that, you know, they want more, they're looking for more stability in their neighborhood in terms of who is there, not so much, you know, the, the in-and-out person. And, and Mr. Jones brought up his short-term rental, which I've brought up that issue before, that because where I grew up in New Jersey, the New Jersey Shore was a typical place for short-term rentals. It was where people came and they vacationed along the beach, and they, they were all short-term rentals, basically. And those houses were generally second homes. They were not primary residents. So it, but it was a different atmosphere. Arvada is a very different, from my perspective, I see it as a very family-friendly environment, and that's where I think you would get pushback from our citizens on the idea of just, you know, it being a non-primary resident or, you know, I, I think I can still get behind that added one, because you're, you're limiting it. But I, I honestly feel our, if it went to a vote, I think our, most of our residents would not want short-term rentals next to their homes.
Okay, so to, again, to get some closure, yes, Mr. Jones?
I just wanted to make one point. So Nancy, just for point of clarity, in the neighborhood where my short-term rental is, there's 42 homes and three short-term rentals. And so our HOA has rules around that as well. And so again, I think it's, and, and maybe that was the same thing for you in Fort Collins, but in the community where my house is, it's not, there's only three out of 42, just point of clarity.
Okay, so again, to get to, to give the team some direction, my sense is you still need some direction. Is that right? Is that true, right? Where do you feel?
Well, you know what, I, I feel like I'm getting the sense of where council's at. I believe that they're more on the side of not restricting it by primary residency, but putting some other parameters on it about the length of time, and then also considering, you know, how many short-term rentals, and we can look for safeguards so that we don't have a bunch of LLCs coming in and those types of things. Maybe having to prove, you know, who the registered agent is so that we don't have a number of those things. And, and I think you're okay with not requiring the marijuana, and if we can put a limit on number of short-term rentals and, but not requiring a primary residency, that's where the majority of council feels comfortable.
Folks okay with that? Good, good, good discussion. We've come a long way from where we were last time. So, okay, we have one more workshop for the evening.
Mayor, can we take a break, a short break?
Yes, we sure can. So let's take a five-minute break, everybody?
That'd be great.
I do want the record to reflect that it's a diet root beer in my frosted mug, so.
Careful, Mark, that looks a little bit.
There's the.
Ah, haha.
Very good. I think we've got all seven of us back. So I will bring us to our final workshop for the evening, the citywide organized waste hauling and recycling. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I drew the short straw, so I will be presenting this item for you.
You lucky guy.
Yeah. And I might add that we did receive some questions from council members John Marriott and Lauren Simpson, and I think some of the questions may get covered in the presentation, but I also would encourage you to, and, and really all the council, to ask questions as we go through this presentation. If the material or the information I'm sharing is in line with your question, we have several of our teammates that are on this, you know, part of this meeting, this evening, that I, that will be happy to answer the questions. Some questions we may not be able to answer, we'll, we'll provide you with answers later, but other questions we may be able to answer. And if I can't answer them, I'll invite some of my teammates to, to answer. We'll do our best, and if we can't, we'll certainly get back to you. Is that okay?
Yeah, but before you start, Mr. Devon, I'm showing 28 participants on this Zoom, but are there other members of the public? Do we have a total count of people who are tuned in?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the.
Bruce know that, or?
Yeah. The, the participants are all showing as panelists, which means that they're members of the team or other sports team members.
So we have no way of knowing how many people in the public are following us tonight?
Well, we, we may have, we may have a number of people that are watching, of course, on live stream or on Channels 8 or 880. I don't know that we have the ability to tell you how many people are watching right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Shall we begin? Okay, Bruce, next slide, please. So tonight, tonight we want to present the, how we got here and how we started down the path of presenting this information to you. You may recall back on December the 10th, 2018, the Sustainability Advisory Committee presented a proposal on regarding an organized waste hauling system that they believed would provide many benefits to Arvada, and these benefits are listed on this slide. And these benefits and what was presented that night have kind of become the, the, the point, I guess, in which we started the foundation of this, of this work. The decrease in road damage, increase in our recycling rates, decrease in noise, nuisance and, and air pollution, the providing of additional services such as recycling and bulky item pickup, and increased safety. And we also felt lower cost to, to residents.
Mr. Devon?
Yes, sir.
May I interrupt you quickly and just ask you? I had emailed this question to you earlier today, and I apologize for emailing it late in the day. But one of the things on this slide is that one of the goals is to increase safety for pedestrians, children, pets, and vehicles. And so I was just trying to ask the question of how many accidents have we had with trash trucks versus pedestrians? And how many accidents with trash trucks versus children? And how many accidents of trash trucks versus pets? And then how many accidents of trash trucks versus vehicles?
So Councilmember Marriott, this is, this is information that we don't necessarily track quite that specifically. We track traffic accidents, for example, with commercial vehicles, so we can, we can pull up statistics around traffic accidents with commercial vehicles, but we don't break those commercial vehicles down into trash trucks or, or anything that's specific. The, I, I think the feeling is that, that with less trucks traveling down the road, that would increase safety because there'd be less heavy trucks traveling down the road. You, we could certainly look at any, any additional information that we weren't necessarily able to necessarily pull up in the, in the afternoon hours that, after we received this question, but that's probably one we're going to have to come back to if we, if we have the information.
Okay. I, you know, that's not necessary. We don't need to create a whole bunch of staff work for it. I, I, I mean, I guess I would understand that if there were really fewer trucks, then, then that would, that there might be some safety component to that. I just, I was surprised to see things like increased safety for kids, and I was wondering, I can't in my mind remember any kids getting hit by trash trucks, but maybe I'm mistaken, maybe I don't know that.
Yeah. I, and, and, and I don't, I don't know that I want to speak for the Sustainability Advisory Committee. I think it was, it was something that they brought up during the December 10th presentation, and I think we felt it was appropriate to represent it as something that was discussed back at that time.
Mr. Jones has a question?
Thank you. So again, Mr. Devon, I appreciate, and sorry, we're so quick into this and already have a couple of questions, but with regard, and I know that you're very goal-oriented and have metrics around many of the, all of the things of the city. And so, you know, as I look at, you know, kind of the goals of hauling system, you know, how, how are we going to, to know if road damage has decreased and the decrease in noise, nuisance, and air pollution? I don't, I mean, do we currently, I guess it's kind of along the same lines as Mr. Marriott's question on, you know, the, the accidents. Do we currently have complaints today? And so do we have a? I know that if, if we have a baseline, then we can measure a lot of these things. And where, where are we right now with this as we're kind of going into this conversation? And if these are true goals of, you know, organized waste hauling, do we have the metrics in place or do we have those baselines already established so that we know if this is successful? Because, you know, again, this is, if, if, if this is what we're looking Because, you know, again, this is, if, if, if this is what we're looking at as a, as a city service, I'm sure that we went through the same kind of questions and rationale when we decided to provide our, our own, you know, city water or wastewater handling services. So what are, what are your thoughts around kind of the baseline metrics on these and how will we know if we're successful?
So, so what I would propose to do is have us research our customer request management system, Ask Arvada, to look at the number of complaints that we have received in association with, with trash hauling over the years and see if, if we were to, if this was to be approved and was to be implemented, whether the, what impact complaints in that area would, would have. In other words, would they go down or not? You know, one of the reasons, one of the, one of the features that we will get to in this slide as we progress through the presentation is around high customer service standards. So one of the things I would want to look at, and I think the council would want to look at, is will the high customer service standards that we have in place for this contract result in overall less complaints about, about trash pickup?
Okay.
As an example.
Okay, I appreciate that. And again, so it sounds like we really don't know today, you know, with any certain degree of certainty that, you know, we may have had some, some complaints with the noise nuisance or air pollution from a truck. But we don't really have a baseline today.
Yeah, because we really haven't regulated this service ever in the past. Having, you know, having metrics around the present situation, I think, would be difficult to get, but we certainly could research some of our databases to see what those could be.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Devon, we're only on the first slide, and I've got two more council members with questions. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Thank you, Mayor. To answer Mr. Jones's questions, there are, there are baselines already out there and maybe right now the, the staff can go back to the congestion mitigation and air quality, also known as CMAC, which is also an organization that tracks all air quality and goals within the metro area. They are sensors all over the metro area looking at pollution. There's also, since we are part of Dr. Cog, there's metro vision goals that the region, all 58 jurisdictions have agreed on of air quality goals and that, that might address that as well. There's also science behind road damage when you look at vehicle and weight and frequency, and you can calculate the, the wear and tear on the road. In fact, science has gotten a lot better with LiDAR. So I think those are some things that might help you with that, but that, that the information's there is probably just not in Devon's fingertips right now. As far as Mr. Marriott's safety for pedestrian and kids and pets, I don't want a kid to get hit, you know? I just don't, I don't think that that's a right statistic to go by. I think it's more of near misses. In fact, when you made that comment, I was sitting in front of my grandparents' house over in Lake Arbor, and their trash company picked up their trash in reverse, coming over a block down the street backwards. No ticket, no one was killed, but boy, that sure was close. So I think that there's maybe some concerns around how vehicles are traveling and how they're doing it and how the frequency. So I think from that perspective, I don't want to see death statistics on children, pets or anybody by traffic, or by trash trucks. I'd rather kind of look at the obvious statistics that look at frequency and how often these vehicles are traveling and what's been observed. And fortunately, some may have gotten tickets, some might have gotten warnings. Some people just said, I'm gonna complain and put something in to Ask Arvada, and that's probably the best, probably number that I grew with Devon to get some idea of complaints against trash companies. So I, I think we're there. I don't think we're far from it. I think a lot of these baselines are there, just gotta go to the right resources. And if anyone needs more information, I'd be more than happy to send you links and, and documents and all the planning documents that the metropolitan area has done on a lot of these topics and bullet points. So Devon, if there's anything I could do for you as well, feel free to reach back and I'll get a hold of those documents for you.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Nancy, Nancy Ford.
I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm looking, I, I wanted to share a document that I'm actually looking at in terms of truck traffic and reduction of air pollution. Some of the elements that trash trucks in particular generate because they're run on fossil fuels and some of them are diesel and some of them are compressed natural gas. You're looking at nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, particulate matter, hydrocarbons. And we know for a fact that with the reduction in traffic right now of just regular car traffic, that Denver has been keeping track of air pollution and it has come down. Also, I just want to say that the city of Lakewood estimated a 50 to 67% reduction in air pollution from trash trucks that are not, you know, into an organized waste system. So there's no question that there is scientific evidence out there that with a reduction of trash trucks, you get a reduction of air pollution.
Okay, Mr. Devon, no questions. Let's go to the next slide and see if we can get some more.
Sure. This is the, the information that was generated by a community survey that I believe was in the spring of 2019, where we, this was a survey that we conducted at this in response to direction from the council after we had conducted, discussed the incorporating this initiative into the 2019 strategic plan. We heard from residents through, mainly through our Speak Up Arvada engagement platform, and as you can see, there's the feedback that we received from the survey, which, which favored as, as the primary reasons, increased recycling and composting and fewer trucks on the road. Next slide, please. So again, this, this is the, the background information. We already talked about the December 2018 council presentation from the Sustainability Advisory Committee. And then in January 2019, I think this is really important, the council requested information during the retreat. And so we came back to council with a workshop in February of 2019 where you asked us to conduct the community outreach and survey, which we just showed you the results of that in the previous slide. And then in May of 2019, we did issue a request for proposal. And the other, I think, important fact that is not on this slide, but I think is important to remember is that following the, we had a workshop in, in July of 2019, and that, at that workshop, we were directed by council to proceed with an action to place the trash hauling issue on the November 2019 ballot. And you, council, council may recall, in fact, it was on, I think it was August the 26th of 2019, when you directed us to not proceed with the ballot and, and, and indicated that in order for an informed vote to occur, more information was necessary. So that's when we proceeded with soliciting the best and final offer from the waste haulers that at that particular point in time were in the process that we were talking to. We had more than one, we had more than Republic Service, we had two other competitors that were involved in the best and final offer process. And it was from that process, beginning in September 2019 through February 2020, that we conducted contract negotiations that resulted in the offer that is embodied and summarized in the contract that is with you tonight. We had, in, in the course of presenting this information, we had a couple of executive sessions with the city council in December and in early, very early March, wherein we were able to fine tune some of the contract provisions, the service conditions, as well as the pricing before, and then were directed to put this on the first reading for presentation or consideration by the city council on March the 16th. As Councilwell knows, we had to close down City Hall due to the public health emergency, and the first reading was delayed until last week, May 4th. So that's the history of how we got to where we are today. This workshop, in fact, was something that was asked for by the council as part of the process to reengage with the community around this issue. And there will be other opportunities that we will have as well.
Hey, Mr. Devon, can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry, Mayor. When was this workshop originally scheduled? Was that back in March? The workshop arriving tonight, we were originally gonna have this March of this year, right?
You know, you know, Mr. Pfeiffer, I believe this workshop was an added step. We were going, the, the plan was, as I recall, was to introduce this on first reading on March the 16th, and then to consider it. I believe the, the date for consideration was going to be on May the 18th, which was about a five-week period between the time it was introduced and the, I'm sorry, I think it was, actually, I think it was in April. It was about a five-week timeframe between the time it was introduced and when we would be actually conducting the public hearing. The, what was, what was planned was a, a series of engagements in the community to have this, this discussion. And we decided not to do the engagements, obviously, because of the public health emergency. And now with the, with the, with the calendar kind of reset as a result of the public health emergency, we added this workshop on as a way of re-engaging the community. And, and I recall the council had a very intentional discussion about that, and it was a result of that discussion. You know, staff wasn't given precise direction to do it, but it was a result of that discussion that we decided we should have this workshop, and that's what we proposed to you when we reset the calendar back in April.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Devon, and we appreciate that.
Okay. So next slide, please, Bruce. So what is before you tonight and what was introduced on May 4th is a, is an ordinance and supporting contract that we believe meets the community goals that were laid out back in December of 2018 by the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Our team has negotiated a very strong proposal with Republic Service. It's, it's a Republic Services, it's a, it's a very competitive proposal. It's been the, the Republic Services has been very responsive and cooperative during the proposal and negotiation process, and we believe the company has the servicing and, and the ability to deliver on the service provisions and pricing points in the contract to the, you know, 32,000 non-HOA households and, and others that we believe, other HOA households that we believe will eventually join. Next slide. So in order to move forward, we have to revise Chapter 90 of our ordinance that gives the city the authority to bill residents for the waste collection so that we can execute the contract. The ordinance updates the city requirements for the other waste haulers, so we are providing a level playing field where all residential properties have curbside recycling. Today, I sent a letter to the other waste haulers that are licensed to do business in the city, informing them about the proposed ordinance, so they will receive notice of the public hearing on June the, June the 15th, and I've invited them to contact me directly if they have any questions. And obviously, I'll keep the city council updated on any contacts I get regarding that. Next slide. So these are the service packages that we have negotiated with Republic Service. The weekly trash collection is through volume-based pricing, starting with a 32 gallon up to 96 gallon carts, as you see in the slide. Bi-weekly collection of recycling within a 96 gallon cart, two drop-off bulky item collection events, plus on-demand bulky item pickup for $15 an item. Spring cleanup event and three fall leaf weekend collections, supporting composting of yard debris, and then door-to-curb collection for physically impaired citizens at no additional charge. I believe this was something that Councilmember Simpson may have asked me about today, about whether or not we would be able to do that. And that was something that we did negotiate with Republic Services and found them very cooperative in wanting to do that. In fact, we have left it with them that we, the, the city team, would be the ones that would screen people to determine if they need to have this service. And, you know, we plan to do what we normally do when it comes to working with our residents, and that is to trust them at their word. And if they believe they need to have the door to curb collection, we will certify them as needing that. Next slide. These, this is the monthly rates for the non-HOA homes, which we negotiate with Republic Services. We believe that these prices are lower than what most Arvada households are paying today. And while achieving the other benefits such as increasing our recycling rates and, and reducing truck traffic, you know, the fact that we're providing different price points for carts, you can see the 32 gallon cart there at $11.50, a little bit more for the 64 trash cart, and then $19.90 for the 96 gallon trash cart. We estimate that the current rates for the non-HOA homes are between $20 and $29. And we believe that as, as we aggregate demand and aggregate the, the, the the number of residents who will hopefully join this, this rate over time, we believe those prices would stabilize. We estimate that 1 to 3% of residents will choose their own company and not pay into the city's systems. However, we believe that residents will still pay a reduced rate for being in the program at that 1 to 3% cost, cost point. Next slide.
Mark, I have a question. Could you go back to that slide for a second? Those rates of $11.50 and $15.70 and $19.90, do they include the $5.13 minimum service fee?
Yes, the, those, those rates assume the, the bulky and yard debris events, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and one thing else, Mark, Mr. Devon, you, you said trash on all those carts, but that includes recycling as well?
Correct, yes. Yes, recycling's included as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. The, so one of the things that has come up is the, the minimum service fee, which provides for the access to the bulky item and collection. You know, this is something that we believe Arvada residents highly value. Those of you who were on the city council back in, I think it was 2015, I think it was either 2015 or 2016, may recall the last time we did a bulky item pickup event. We literally clogged the entire recycling system for the Denver metro area at that time. I, I actually personally went out to a few residents and picked up their televisions and a few other things along those lines in order to remove items that they had tried to get rid of at that time and were unable to because of what literally happened as a result of so many people accessing the, these, accessing, getting rid of their household waste at the same time. With this minimum service fee, we're able to manage that better and, and take care of something that's highly in demand. Also, one of the negotiation points with Republic Service is that in, in most contracts, the minimum service rate is for the minimum service provided through the waste pickup. So in other words, based on what I showed you in the early, in the previous slide, people would have been paying about $11 a month, a little over $11 a month as a minimum service fee for get, for getting access to the bulky item pickup. What we've negotiated with Republic Service is a rate that's less than half that, at $5.13 a month, as, as, as the minimum service fee to get access to the, to this bulky item pickup and the, and the yard waste programs. So this, this is something that is unusual, and it was based on, I believe, our hard-fought negotiations by our negotiations team to get to win that particular concession. And frankly, by Republic Services, I think they're good faith attempts and good faith efforts to negotiate a good to negotiate a good contract with Arvada, I think they value the idea that they would come to work for us and be our contractor. So we would be, you know, we're proud of being able to get that, that rate down to the, to where it is. You know, like other city utilities, the waste hauling contract is based on, on every household paying into the program, and the minimum service fee provides an entree to that, as well as providing the exchange for services with the bulky item pickup.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah. Quick question on that, Mark, or sorry, Mr. Devon. So am I hearing you right that the bulky item pickup includes electronics?
Yes.
Okay. And then that rate, the, the $5.13, that monthly rate, how long is that set? Is that just for the first year? And what is the, what are the parameters around that? Because, you know, as you kind of spoke to, you know, in, in years past, and I think it was 2016, it was my first year on council, we couldn't get, you know, a hauler to, to provide that bulky pickup just because it was so expensive for them to do. So, you know, they do this in this first year at $5.13, and it's highly accepted, and it, and it puts a halt to whatever systems they're using. And then next year, they say, yeah, actually, it's, it's more like, you know, double that or whatever, going back to that $11. So how long is that rate set?
So the contract terms are that the rates are set and cannot increase for the first two years.
Okay.
And then at that point, there's, yeah, at that point, after two years, there's, and this is again, one of the other slides coming up, so I'll be repeating myself. No, no, that's okay, it's a great question.
You, you can wait till we get there if that's better.
Okay, well, I, I started left the cat out of the bag.
Okay.
There's a, there's a floor and ceiling restriction for the, for the future rates at 2.5% up to 3.5% annually.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Devon, I have a couple of questions for you about the $5.13 per month fee. Can you tell me what that includes? Break it down by, by increment or by fraction, what, what that's for?
So I'm going to see if one of my teammates, perhaps Nancy Ellen or Emily.
I'll be happy, also, Mr. Devon, I can direct you to the last page of our packet, I believe, that maybe does that for you. Maybe not quite there. Here you go, it's, it's further down in your, in your presentation, so maybe we can ask it when you get there. But it, it shows the minimum service fee that Republic Services gets $4.25 of it? And that the city gets 88 cents of it? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so what will the city do with that 88 cents of that fee? What do they do with that?
The 88 cents of the fee is, is, as you could see in that, in that, in that slide and in the document, that's basically the, covering the city costs for administering the program.
And that's it?
Well, for the minimum service fee, as you can see, it's, it's higher for the other, for the others, for the other.
Okay.
Price points.
So let me ask you a question then. So if you're in an HOA and your HOA chooses to not participate in this program, are you charged a minimum service fee?
You're charged the minimum service fee, assuming, you know, if you're, if you're an HOA and you provide your own trash hauling, which, which most do, then the only thing you would pay is the minimum service fee.
Of $5.13 per month per household?
No, 88 cents.
88 cents.
If you're an HOA and you provide your own trash hauling, you would be paying the minimum service fee.
Okay, and you, well, but you've got it defined here as the minimum service fee is $5.13.
Correct.
So let's be clear here, if you're in an HOA and your HOA chooses to not participate in the city program, you're charged 88 cents per household, is that correct?
No, 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 no. I'm going to ask for either Emily or Nancy to weigh in on this.
Okay.
Make sure we clarify this precisely.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Mark, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, Nancy, do you want to take it?
I can. Mark, 51 cents of that 88 cents is the billing fee. But that, the bulk yard waste and the spring and fall events are also included in that 88 cents.
Okay, so Nancy, may I ask you a question since you just answered that one? Do you know if you're a household in an HOA and you choose to not participate in the city's program, how much will you be billed per household as a fee?
Well, if you're, if you're already in an HOA that has recycle as part of their program, you are not charged anything above and beyond that 88 cents. And that 88 cents again is, helps cover your participation in the spring and fall events as well as the bulk events.
Okay, so you, if you're in an HOA, you choose, your HOA chooses to not participate in the city's program, you're billed 88 cents per household, and for that, you get, the, the city uses that 88 cents for billing, it uses it for the spring and fall drop-off events.
You are correct.
Am I correct?
Yes, you are.
Okay, but if you're not in an HOA, if you're just in the, in, in the part of Arvada that doesn't have an HOA, and you choose to not participate in the city's program, you're charged not 88 cents, but you're charged $5.13, correct?
You are correct, and that's the $4.25 for the Republic Services fee and the 88 cents that everyone pays.
Okay, and does that 88 cents that everyone pays, that covers the city's cost to bill, but also covers the spring and fall drop-off events and the, the bulk item drop-off?
You are correct.
Mr. Marriott, if I was a judge, I'd be saying asked and answered at this point.
Okay, well, no, I, I'm getting to the question I, I wanted to ask, and that is, what, where, what does the $4.25 do and where does it go? Who gets it and, and for what purpose?
I'm going to say that Republic gets the $4.25, and it's always explained, in my mind, Emily, you, you say it so beautifully, can you do this for me?
Sure. Sure, so what we're doing with these numbers is that we've negotiated to provide the same services to our community members who are not in an HOA and don't have that benefit of being able to negotiate as a group to get the best group pricing. So HOAs already, if they choose to, HOAs have already have a mechanism where they can group together, and they can negotiate for a price that's going to benefit everyone in the HOA. It's also going to benefit them with having fewer trucks on their neighborhood roads. So it's going to go back to that earlier slide of reduced noise and environmental pollution. It's going to have one point of contact for any complaints or any concerns about their trash pickup. And it's going to be something that the HOA individuals don't have to think about. They get to just pay into a fund and have the HOA take care of that. We're trying to provide that then for the entire community at the best rates we can. To provide those for community members who aren't in an HOA, we do have to charge a fee because they're going to be getting those additional benefits of not only the bulky items and the fallen, spring yard cleanup events, but also the benefit of having fewer trucks on their roads, the environmental benefits, having one point of contact, and also not having to go out and negotiate for the best prices themselves and having the city take that role on for them. Republic, to be able to give us such good prices for our community, has to protect their interests as well. So that's why there is this minimum service fee. Because these trucks are going to be going down their streets anyways, we really do want to encourage people to participate, to be able to achieve all of those benefits for our entire community. So yes, for Republic to be able to give us such great rates for our community, they did have to have a fee that they would provide, that they would charge the people who decide to opt out.
Okay, so Emily, let me follow that up with a question for you then real quick, or maybe as an observation as much as a question. But you said a lot of things that that $4.25 covers a whole bunch of things and a whole bunch of reasons why it's got to be charged. Things like you don't have to negotiate on your own, or the city takes care of this for you, or there's fewer trucks driving down your street. And so I maybe, I guess I wouldn't agree with that, but I, but I guess I have some maybe can reach to understand that. But I, my question would be, why would that go to Republic then? If the city's doing these things for you, why does Republic get the fee? And I think you kind of answered it with the second part of your answer, which is, you called it one thing, I might call it another, whether you call it a tariff or a, a penalty for not playing in the program or an inducement to be in the program, would, would those terms I'm using be accurate as well?
Well, I think it's a risk benefit, right? For, it's a risk, risk assessment for Republic. They can, that's part of the negotiation that the city has had with Republic is that by getting these lower rates, they're having to make sure that they're not going to have trucks going down streets where they don't make any stops and that they're, then the cost is no longer going to make sense for them. So we're trying to do, what we're trying to do is find the company that's giving our community members the lowest cost, but also protecting that company's risk. And that's what the negotiation part is. And so while there are benefits that we believe the community will have by having that single truck, there is a cost associated to that. So it is something that those people can sign in whenever they want, where an HOA cannot necessarily sign up immediately and be added to a route. Our hopes are that they can be at least, at the very least, within six months, but individuals at any time can sign up and be part of that route and have their trash picked up at the great rates that the city has negotiated.
Okay, so last, last point, and then I'll, I'll leave this one. Just to be clear then, for folks who elect to not participate in the city's program, they will be paying Republic Services $4.25 a month to not pick their trash up? For no services at all?
They will be paying the city, and the city is paying a, a total contract amount to Republic. So the fee that they are paying will be paid to the city so that the city can administer the pro, the program of providing waste services to our community. So the fee is just, we've been broken it down to be fully transparent for our community so they exactly see what we're doing. But really, that fee is going to the city, it will be billed through the city, and then we're paying Republic an annual contract amount that is locked in for the first two years.
So that's the opposite of what I understood. So you're telling me that the amount the city is going to pay Republic monthly doesn't have to do with how many places they pick trash up, but is a fixed amount? And that $4.25 is what is required to make the fixed amount workout?
No, it's just part of the amount that we will be paying them. I'm just making the clarification that the fees are coming to the city, and the city is using that fee money to pay Republic to administer the program of waste services.
Okay, so let me be clear then, so for someone who opts out, they're going to pay $4.25 to the city, who will then turn that exact $4.25 over to Republic as a reward for not picking up the trash or for, or because they didn't have to pick up the trash or because they could have had that house, but they didn't, or however you want to call it. But the city is going to turn that $4.25 over to Republic for no services provided for that address.
Well, Emily, let's, let's be clear here. Again, the people who are paying this still have the access to the bulky item picked up in the yard waste events, correct?
Correct, yes.
But, but that's what the 88 cents covers.
Yes, so there is a fee, I mean, they still are receiving that benefit of having the bulky item and the spring and fall drop-off, which, as we know, would be much more cost-wise if you use both, all of those events, you'd be spending more. But yes, you're correct that people who opt out, we will be paying that fee. But it's incorrect to say that it's just a straight over. It was part of a full negotiation based on an estimate of what we believe will be the number of households that are part of the program and also part of, and those who opt out. So at this point, to say that it's just an exact transfer isn't quite correct. This was part of the full negotiation to get the pricing that we are going to pay Republic to then turn around and provide the service to our community.
Okay, so I guess I'm a little confused then. So if, the forecast is 1% to 3% of Arvadas might opt out, which I'd make that to be somewhere between 300 and 1,000 households might opt out. If 5,000 households opt out, what hap, does that, what happens to that minimums? I mean, I, I guess I just don't understand how that equates to a number on a minimum service fee. If, if only 100 opted out, is it different than if 5,000 opt out? I don't understand how that works with the, with the billing, with how the city is going to pay Republic. Because my understanding was we were going to pay Republic for each service that they rendered, as well as then pay them for each service that they could have rendered that they didn't. And that's what the $4.25 was for.
If anyone from finance wants to jump in on the numbers, you're welcome to. But it was part of the full negotiation with the estimates that we predicted based off of other communities. And that was by figuring out the full cost and then breaking that down by what we assumed to be people who are going to opt out. Again, those costs are locked in for two years. After first, the first two years, things could be changed within that parameters that we have within the contract.
Okay, sounds good, I won't belabor the point, I'll have another question for you later on. So I'll talk to you again in a minute, thanks.
Thank you, Lauren, Lauren Simpson, please.
Actually, I believe Kate, Ms. Kate Bailey would like to say something. So I would like to invite her to do so, and then I'll follow up.
Thank you, Lauren. I just wanted to jump in about the opt-out and just clarify that if I live in an HOA and I choose not to participate in my HOA's trash program, I still pay my HOA the trash fee. So, and that truck still drives by my house, and my fee is probably a lot higher than that $5.13. So this system is not a lot different than what happens in the HOAs is that you are paying into a, a joint program that everyone is choosing to participate in or not, but there is some cost in not participating.
But, but Kate, if an HOA chooses to not participate, are they charged $4.25 per month per household for not participating in the city's arrangement with Republic Services?
No, because the HOA already has their own independent trash and recycling contract, so.
But individuals can have their own independent trash and recycling contract too, can they not?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Simpson now.
Oh, go ahead.
I was simply going to ask about, the last five to 10 minutes have seen a great deal of discussion on the logistics of this particular issue. What I am curious about is simply, is this an unusual idea? We are not the first city to explore single-hauler trash. Many of our neighboring communities have this. And so what are they doing? Have we learned from their experiences? And what can we extrapolate from what our neighbors have done? And what have we extrapolated from what our neighbors have done? Thank you.
Well, I'll take the, I'll take the first shot at this, and then others can jump in. The negotiation process with Republic Services accounted for their experience in implementing this, these kinds of services in other communities and, and, and the experiences that other communities have had. In other words, for example, the 1% to 3% of households expected to choose their own company is something that they've experienced in other, in other communities where they've serviced and where we've seen in the metro area. Kate or Emily, if you want to add to that, please do.
Yeah, I would start at a nationwide perspective. This is extremely common. About 70% of US cities either run their own trucks where the city is picking up trash and recycling or have this type of contract system. So we are definitely the exception out here in the Rocky Mountain region where, where we have residents subscribing to their own services. Within Colorado, we have 11 cities on the Front Range in particular that contract for trash and recycling. And then we have a number of small communities throughout the state that are also contracting. So a lot of your smaller towns like Craig, for example, on the Western Slope. We have seen these programs in place on the Front Range since as early as 2007. Lafayette or Louisville was the first, so we have more than 13 years of data to see how all these programs work. We've seen them rebid, we've seen the haulers change out, we've seen different types of arrangements. There's a lot of great experience, no community has gone back. And so we see a lot of good, positive results moving forward.
And very specifically, the minimum service fee, is that a standard part of the contracts? Is that something that you, Arvada, just didn't negotiate well? Or is that something that other communities see, and in which case, does our minimum service fee, how does it compare to the ones that other cities have produced for their residents? Just as a apples-to-apples comparison?
Yeah, so the minimum service fee is included in every other city. They need to have every, every household in the program for the economics to work for the hauler. You can't just be driving by all these houses and not picking it up. That's the problem we have with the system now. Usually, the way it is set up in other cities is that that minimum service fee is the price of the thirty-two gallon trash service. So it's essentially just, we're going to charge you the small, the lowest rate. Arvada is unique in that we have negotiated a lower rate than that, because we heard from city council that, that residents wanted the choice to opt out. So we worked with Republic to say, how can we lower that? Originally, they wanted that set closer to the eleven dollars, which is the rate for the thirty-two gallon service. So we were able to say, okay, we understand it can't be zero, but, but we don't want it to be eleven. Where can we sort of land on something that felt more reasonable?
So what you're saying is we would be the first city to have a lower rate than the, than the smallest trash bin because of what the negotiators.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hey, David Jones.
If this question, or if this, if this is going to come up later, I'm happy to, to wait till we get there. But with those approximately thirteen thousand houses that are in an HOA, do we know what those HOAs are paying for their trash services? And the reason why I ask is, I'm in a metro district. I'm assuming that the metro districts are falling into that same category as HOA, while it's just a little bit different. But we pay thirty dollars a month for our metro district fees. And so I'm assuming that that goes to a lot more than trash. And so if, if my trash were fifteen dollars and, and Republic does our metro district trash today and goes up based on this. And again, I'm, I don't know what, what we pay or what negotiated our metro district has with Republic. But do we know kind of what the average HOA pays?
So we've done some research, however, I don't know that we were able to get all the data from the HOAs because we asked them and some provided some information and some didn't. Does anyone on the team have that information?
We were not able to get consistent data from the HOAs in terms of both what they're paying and then also what's included in that contract. So would clarify that this contract does include recycling, it does include the bulky and the yard waste collection. So we weren't able to get data and/or compare apples to apples with the HOAs.
Also, like my HOA, we have, everybody gets a ninety-six gallon trash and recycle. And we don't have access to any of those other things. So I, I guess I'm just trying to get an idea, again, you know, going back to, you know, the couple of slides where, you know, the goals of, you know, this was really to make sure that, you know, we were providing a program that, that the residents were asking for because it was going to save them money. And I think, and it's hard to say that we're going to save money for everybody. It was like, possibly, there's a couple of, of places, you know, if my HOA or my decides to go in, it's going to cost those people of, of our metro district more than what the cities negotiated, at the cities negotiated rate. So it just seems to me like it's not, it's not perfect for everybody, and it's not perfect for I, I, I've thought here, but I just, it doesn't seem to me like the those HOAs that are currently in the program. Because Mr. Devon, you mentioned that you thought that over time, most of those HOA would come into the system. Is that, and maybe I heard you wrong.
No, I did say that.
Okay, so I don't know how, because my sense is, is that for our HOA, we would probably, that, or our metro district, that's probably going to, you know, that would be pretty heated conversation if, if the price was going to go up for our community, for our, for our community, so.
Well, I, I, I
I'll put together a question.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say that because of not only the cost, but also the additional services from the bulky item pickup and, and the, and the yard waste and, and other things along those lines that are extra adds that typically people have highly valued.
Okay, thanks.
I also, can I also speak to the, there's a price inequity here, right? So HOAs have rates of maybe fifteen, but if I'm an individual household, that's not what we saw. We saw rates more of twenty to twenty-nine dollars per month. So the goal was to try to get, not know, it to get non-HOA households to save money and reduce their rates.
It's Ford.
So a couple of things I'm thinking of. So in an HOA, if you're being charged eighty-eight cents a month, correct? Is that correct, Mark, Mr. Devon, eighty-eight cents a month?
That's, that's the city's share, yes.
Right, so I'm figuring that's ten dollars and fifty-six cents a year at eighty-eight cents a month. I recall paying twenty-five dollars apiece for two television sets. And if I got bulky item pickup in addition to what I'm currently getting, that is certainly saving me a lot of money if I'm going to be throwing out computers, televisions, you may not do it every year, but we're only talking a difference of ten fifty-six. The other thing that we're not talking about
Nancy, may I, may I stop you right there because I, I have to set the record straight. I was asked about electronic disposal. And, and I misspoke earlier, electronic disposal is not included in this, in, in the bulky item pickup.
Okay, well, so it's not included, but if I want to get rid of a mattress or something, it would cost me at least fifteen if I did it on my own and more. I don't see that as a major stressor for, for people. What we're not saying, though, about that minimum fee is, is that by choosing, by valuing choice over reduction of trucks on our roads, those folks that are valuing their choice, they are part of the contribution of the wearing of our roads, which is exactly why we're trying to do this program, is to reduce road truck traffic on our roads, unnecessary truck traffic, and wear and tear on our roads. We can prove statistically that garbage trucks, waste trucks are heavier than any other truck, and they are causing greater wear. We saw that in the Fort Collins study. So there is a cost to choice, and we need to say that because we are a community that's trying to have, you know, we're, we're using community vitality as one of our goals here as well. And there's a cost, you know? If you want to put an extra truck on the road, you're causing more wear and tear.
Mr. Viper.
You know what? I totally forgot where I was going with this. I had so many, this conversation is so good, I was all over the place. You know, I think one of the things I did want to bring up about the HOAs, because I do live in a metro district as well, and I know the discussion's already happening about should our metro district join in or not. One of the topics, just to clarify around HOAs, that they don't have an option today is actually lowering their bill even more by picking a lower gallon, you know, pickup, which in the last two HOAs I've been in, you get ninety-six gallons of recycled, ninety-six gallons of trash. And we pay twenty to twenty, it was about twenty bucks a month. When I left my last HOA, it's about twenty still. But what the good part of this, what, what I think could encourage HOAs is the fact that some of the oh, I'm not, that's not for you, mayor, but, you know, the patio home neighborhoods might not want a big trash can to draw, put out there as much. You know, they might be more comfortable with the thirty-two gallon trash receptacle, you know? Because at least the citizens that have talked to me is, they don't, they don't necessarily want this big old trash can to drag out there. They're looking for something smaller, something to that effect. So I, I do see HOAs maybe looking at it differently, because I've seen that conversation happening now. So I appreciate that. And, and unfortunately, I, I forgot my other question, so I'll leave it there, but that was more of a statement around that, that topic. Thank you.
Mr. Devon, you may proceed. You're, you're muted, Mr. Devon.
Yes, I thought it was best to mute during this whole discussion, so I did. Bruce, would you please move on to the next slide? Thank you. So actually, I think we, I've already talked about this. The, the HOAs can join the program, and they're excluded at this point because many of them have organized contracts that are long-term. We already talked about the eighty-eight cent charge. And also the, what we negotiated here in terms of different pricing for different levels of trash pickup is something that we thought would, people would see value in. Next slide. So here is the monthly household rates and the, the amount of money that is, is paid to Republic versus the amount of money that the city keeps in order to stand up and fund the enterprise program. As you can see, for the sixty-four gallon container, Republic is, 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 is paid sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents. The city adds on three dollars and thirty-eight cents for the nineteen ninety total. When we brought this to you during an executive session, the pricing was actually lower. And it was from the discussion during that executive session around the need to stand up the enterprise program a little bit more quickly than what we had projected early on. So we have done that, increased the, the fees based on the need for the city to stand up the enterprise program in line with, with our budget and fiscal policy and having the mandatory reserve. Also, one of the things that we're very proud of, in fact, is that we were able to secure a grant of over five hundred thousand dollars to help purchase the recycling carts and support recycling education. Obviously, that would occur if this program moves, moves forward. That will help us to offset part of the cost to purchase the, the carts. The, the, the plan is for the carts to be purchased by the city and for the city to retain ownership of those carts. And this grant will help in the recycling portion of that amount.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question for Mr. Devon, and, and let me start it off by saying, I, I came to the staff concerned about the financial structure of this deal, and it was at my urging that some of these prices were raised. So the fact that these prices are slightly higher is, is on me, however, I think with that, with good reason. The question I have for you is a couple here, Mr. Devon. So the, the carts, there will be, that will be purchased for recycling and for, for trash. About how much total cost is that?
Well, I will ask Mr. Archer if he would mind replying to that.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Marriott. So your question was around how much is the total purchase price of the carts?
Yep, both recycle and trash.
So let me pull up my spreadsheet here. So the overall purchase price should be right at five point five million?
Okay, and we've received a, a grant for about a half a million total that's going to be used, some for carts and some for education. How much of that five hundred K is going to be used for education versus carts?
Kate can help me on the specifics, but the majority is being used for the carts. I think the education piece was twenty-five thousand?
Thirty-five, Brian.
Thirty-five thousand, okay, thank you, Nancy.
Thirty-five thousand, so there's four hundred and sixty-five thousand to be put towards approximately two point seven five million dollars worth of recycling carts?
Approximate numbers, that's
Up, somewhere in the back of the napkin, okay, got it. So given this screen that's up there showing the, the amount the city gets on the thirty-two gallon, sixty-four gallon, ninety-six gallon, the green part of that, the part that just the city gets, part of that is to amortize or purchase those carts. So there's about four, or, or about five, little, over five million dollars worth of carts to be purchased. How long will it take at those rates for those carts to be owned by the city or to be purchased by the city?
So the schedule that we created, those carts will be paid off in a five-year time horizon.
Okay, so, so that three twenty-four, three thirty-one, and three thirty-eight, the portion of that that goes towards the carts, it'll take approximately five years for those to have paid off the carts. So the question then is, where are we getting the five million dollars to buy them upfront? And who are we paying back for, for buying them? Because I'm assuming we have to buy them upfront, that we're not buying them over time.
That's correct. So we will work out, so we're, per direction of city council and also per accounting guidance from the GFOA, we need to make this an enterprise fund. And so we will look at using internal borrowing to purchase the carts. So either that borrowing will come from the general fund, if it has the ability to make those loans. If not, we will work with our utilities funds to make that loan and then pay it off inside the five years. We feel very comfortable we can do that because of our ten-year planning horizon and our ten-year financial model that we should be able to come up with the money today and then get repaid.
Okay, and then quick follow-up on that. Would we internally borrow like that, either from our general fund or from our utilities fund? And I get, I assume with that, you're meaning either the water, the wastewater, or stormwater funds. We're borrowing from our water fund that we're, are we paying that back to that fund with interest?
Normally, if it's a borrowing from one of our utilities funds, yes. If it's a borrowing from our general fund, no.
Okay, if we, if we are borrowing from our utilities funds, what kind of interest will we have to pay back? And is that figured into this model? Given that, I mean, it's five million dollars, it's not like just a hundred thousand dollars, it's a significant amount of money.
So what we usually do is one of two things. Either what we can do on the open market, what we call our cost of borrowing, and that today would be right around two and a half percent, or we do a calculation on what we can invest. And so that would be what our return is on what we would call fund balance or available dollars. And that, up until recently, was about one point seven percent. Obviously, today, that number is significantly less.
So a couple, a couple of percent.
Yeah, a percentage.
Are we under federal rules or state rules or anything like that about, about what we have to do? I know there's arbitrage rules and all kinds of things that, that cover all kinds of other borrowing we do. Is that, are there similar regulatory environments for us here, or are we free to do whatever we want?
No, we are certainly regulated both by the GFOA and the state of Colorado in making sure that this is a fair arms-length transaction. So certainly, we could not borrow money, let's say, from the water fund and return a ten percent interest rate, or vice versa, borrow and not return some sort of fair compensation. But really, we would work with our auditors to ma- and our legal department, obviously, to make sure that we are doing a reasonable transaction. And many times, if it's done between our utility funds, we bring that borrowing to city council as well so that you can take formal action on it.
Right, okay, um, okay, that sounds, that sounds fine, that sounds, sounds fair. So la- last question, or last little point of inquiry here. So if we go out and buy thirty-six thousand, or I guess seventy-two thousand carts by the time we buy a trash and a recycle cart for everybody, so that's a significant number, seventy-two thousand, and it takes us five years to pay them off, in that five years, there's some percentage of them who will, that will not survive that five years. How, how have we dealt with that?
So we built in a percent in this model as well. Part of the negotiation was to talk to various cities, Golden being one, Lafayette, and understand what they are seeing. And our hope is to then build up an inventory that would be that would be monitored and deployed by Republic and adjust if needed, depending on how many are stolen or run over or destroyed. And I think as part of the contract, Republic also has a limit on that with individuals and is supposed to kind of monitor that for us.
Right. But, so I, I understand, I understand all that, but, but we have to have some financial assumption built in there. Do you have any idea what that, how significant is that, is that financial impact of some percentage of those carts not lasting five years? And of course, then there's also the, then the down the road and with, and with, in some period of time, every one of them will have to be replaced because they're not going to all last forever, obviously.
Correct. So we also built in, as part of these rates, the ability to replace the carts down the road. So we've added some increased costs to each one of the residents to build a fund balance and then to build a reserve so that the next time we go out, we can pay cash for the carts and buy them.
Okay. And, and did that financial calculation and assumption, did that include the, the, assuming that trash carts will get more expensive over time? Or did it include, did it assume that they'll stay the same price over time?
No, we built an inflationary factor into that.
Okay. And, and I would also assume we've built in that probably only this one time we'll be buying seventy-two thousand carts all at once and that the volume pricing we'll get in the future might not be as good as the pricing we get now?
That is correct.
Okay. So do you have any way, you know, this is a big, big deal for me as a steward of the city's finances, and I think it's probably a big deal to people who are concerned about the health of the city's finances, particularly in these coronavirus times and, and, and going forward, and particularly, I think, with the fear for what their cost for a city-provided service might be down the road. Do you have any way of between now and June fifteenth of providing an actual financial kind of model or breakdown on some of these questions that I've asked that, that, that could, I know the plan is for there to be, you know, at least another opportunity for the residents of Arvada to see this in detail, for them to actually see those details and not just get a, get it, not just have the answer be, yeah, we, we built it into the model. Yeah, it's built in. Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we have to pay interest, but we don't know how much, but we, we'll, trust us, we'll do it, or whatever. To, to actually, and, and I don't, not that I distrust you, Mr. Archer, nothing could be further from the truth. But, but that, that, that just, there is some way of providing this in, in, in real numbers, given that most of them are assumptions, because we don't know how many trash carts won't survive five years. I mean, some of them will be destroyed in the first month, and some of them might last twelve years. I mean, you never know. But given that it would be full of assumptions, but, but details of this type of stuff so that folks can see the money that's coming into the city, what are they going to do with the money? And what are the assumptions over time so that folks may have some comfort that this isn't being pitched to them at a, a, a lost leader-type price to get the thing up and going, and then that becomes more expensive as it goes down the road?
Absolutely, Councilmember Marriott. We can certainly provide what we used for our planning process and work with Mr. Devon on the appropriate way to present that, not only to Council, but to the residents of Arvada.
Okay, thank you.
Great. And I see Nancy Allen there looking very confident that they're going to be able to do that.
I am. We, these were not difficult numbers. We have basis for all of them, and, and I absolutely am pleased to provide them.
Great, great. Thank you.
Lauren Simpson.
Um, real quick, I very much appreciate staff's breakdown of the numbers. I very much appreciate my colleagues' insightful questions into the numbers. But one thing we just simply missed was the reason. Why did the city decide to loan, do the number, to put together these numbers and buy the carts as opposed to renting the carts from the hauler, which most current people already do with their current contracts? And in addition, I just want to verify for labor reasons that this is not going to come up as a tax increase on residents.
Well, Councilmember Simpson, I, I think the best way to answer that is by us developing the financial model to, to purchase the carts, we're actually saving money compared to if we had had Republic or, or any other hauler that we might choose to buy the carts. That would have actually added some amount of money, and I can't remember what it is. We can certainly provide that for you at the, in the future. But it would have added some additional cost to the, some, some additional monthly cost to the bills. Because by us being able to utilize our capital and finance it, as, as Mr. Archer described, we would not be, we would not be looking for, you know, the same level of interest and, and all those kinds of things if we were doing it through internal borrowing. Plus, we also had the, the ability to get grants. And believe me, we're not still, we're not done with grants. So we're still looking for grants as well. And, and we just have the five hundred thousand dollar grant that's, that, that we have secured. But as a, as a public agency, we had the ability to attract additional grants that the private sector did not.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And if you would be willing, those grant information, just real quick, what do, what does that look like in the, that we currently have?
Well, the, the one grant that we have is from the Recycling Partnership at five hundred thousand dollars. And we remain, look, you know, we may, we, we remain on the lookout for additional grants that would offset, offset those costs.
Wonderful, thank you.
Ms. Board.
I have a question for Kate. You there, Kate?
Yeah.
She is.
You there, Kate?
Yeah.
She is.
Hi, Kate. You have a lot of experience and knowledge about other cities. One of the concerns that I've seen in a lot of the emails that we've gotten is this fear that prices are going to go up very much in the future. In the cities that have engaged in single hauler, like Lafayette, Denver, Golden, have you seen rates going up?
All of the cities have a slightly different contract in terms of how prices are allowed to increase over time. And so staff looked at the different contracts out there, and they heard from Council that, that rate escalation was an issue. And so we were able to sort of cobble together, I think, the best practices from other communities. So we, we went ahead and got the fixed two-year pricing, which I believe we stole from the town of Sheridan. And then we also capped the rate moving forward, which, which was common in a lot of communities as well. There were lots of different ways that, that cities dice it up, but each city does have some sort of fixed rate escalation. So, so no community is subject to this crazy rate hike over time. And what we've also seen in other communities is that this is just a five-year contract or potentially a seven-year contract. So you can renegotiate when the contract comes due. And we've seen cities come back with great rates. We've seen them come back with new services. We've seen them change haulers to get different pricing and better deals. So it's not a long-term contract. You don't have to worry about what rates might be like in twenty years. The rates are set for two years. There's a small potential increase over that. And that was sort of the, the best practices we learned from other communities.
And would you, would you say that there's some truth to the fact that it's a, it's a bitted process? So it's not like a monopoly where there are absolutely no other companies out there. Because I've been thinking about this, you know, even though a company gets a contract, they have to keep that contract. And the only way they're going to keep that contract is if they provide good service and their rates are reasonable in terms of what other companies are charging. So it's not like there are no other companies that exist, as in, you know, say, your utilities, where very few companies exist to provide that service.
Correct. So that's one of your advantages of being in the Denver metro area. You have a lot of different haulers serving the region. They're all going to be interested in this contract moving forward. They're going to be staying competitive in your HOAs. This is, you know, definitely, this is a, a good amount of business for any trash hauler. They'd be looking for this type of contract. And that's what enables you to get the competitive rates.
Thank you. Mr. Devon, if you'll unmute and go on.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Bruce, you want to move on? All right. So here's some other key contract points. Actually, we've already touched on a few of them. Right now, we're projecting a May twenty twenty-one start date if this action is approved on June the fifteenth. The prices, as, as Kate mentioned, are fixed until twenty twenty-three. After that, we have a CPI increase of up to three point five percent per year based on the Water, Sewer, Trash Index. The five-year term with two additional years. So as Kate said, that would enable us to renegotiate if we do not, if we believe that, that the contract hauler is not being fair to us and our residents. And you can, we've already talked about the purchase of the, of the recycling carts. And also, the hauler will maintain the carts for us, and it'll be, we will be providing billing as part of the bi-monthly bill. Okay. Bruce didn't even wait for me to ask him to move it. He just got it going there. The, one of the things that I, I, we were really intentional about is customer service standards. One of the conditions that we built in is a ninety-nine point nine percent service guarantee and penalties for poor service of, or non-compliance. The, the detailed standards are in the contract. The City Council knows full well that on contracts like this, we are required to build in performance measures. And that is one of the exhibits that's in the contract that was in your packet tonight. And we have, we require data reports on the customer service metrics. And, you know, we would be, we also have customer service standards in terms of, of a, a local call center that is responsive to citizens and questions that they have regarding their, their services. Next slide. So again, this is first step in engagement. As we move into June, we'll be looking at multiple engagement options in order to provide for opportunities for citizens to find out more about what we're proposing. Obviously, we need to take into account the current public health emergency and social distancing that might be required. But our public involvement opportunities include information on our website. We're going to do some engagement through Speak Up Arvada. We'll be holding a public forum via Zoom on a, on a date during the week of May the twenty-fifth. And then as we edge into June, we're going to figure out how we can have in-person meetings at different locations in the city. So for example, we might use one of our community stations and have, you know, up to ten people at a time during scheduled meeting, you know, meeting opportunities in order to make sure that we are able to, you know, be accessible to as many people as possible that want to find out about this. And of course, the, the June fifteenth public hearing. So we're in the process of, of sorting those out and getting those scheduled and announced so that citizens and others can contact us and have some, some level of face-to-face discussion. Next slide. So again, the, the timeline that is up here pointing towards the June fifteenth, twenty twenty, public hearing. And if it is approved, then in the second quarter, or the remainder of, actually, probably more likely the third quarter in twenty twenty, will finalize the implementation plan. The contractor needs to have a lot of lead time to purchase trucks, recruit drivers, and basically gear up for being able to service our community. We'll finalize the acquisition of carts. We have a lot of changes and upgrades that we need to do this, to the city billing, city billing software. And then, of course, the deployment of the carts to the residents and the program start date, which we identify right now as May third, twenty twenty-one. So about a year from now. Next slide. And then, of course, the questions and public discussion for the June fifteenth public hearing. The, I think the mayor noted that we have twenty-five participants on this call. And if you take away the seven council members, that's probably roughly, roughly about eighteen team members that are part of this call. I, I think this is a good opportunity for me to highlight the immense effort that this has been over the last eighteen months. Because standing up a program like this is a lot more complicated than simply writing an ordinance or a contract. There's a lot of work that went into this. You know, for example, we have a lot of team members in the utility billing area to make sure that we have the right utility billing software and, and technology platform to be able to implement this accurately. We have people in information technology to make sure that that, that, that they provide that part of the support. And, and we have people at the policy level, and it's the management level, and it's the financial level to make sure that everything that we're doing is consistent with our, our, our practices of good financial management. We have, for example, Nancy Allen is the purchasing manager. We have legal resources. In fact, regional, we're doing a little back-of-the-napkin analysis today, and we figure that we've allocated probably about two and a half FTEs to this effort since, over the last eighteen months. Now, that didn't mean that we hired anybody, because we did, not for this. It just meant that a number of us had to take on the additional work required to move this project forward and, and, you know, have meetings like this, for example, to present the, the, the package to the City Council, make sure we're answering your questions fully. And of course, we have to do the same to the community. So with that, we'll, we'll rest and see if there's any more questions from Council.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you guys will allow me, I have a handful of questions that I would like to ask various staff members. As well as then, I have six questions that residents have sent me in the week leading up to this that they would like asked as well. And I don't want to monopolize everybody's time. So if you'd like this, me to split it in half, I'd be happy to. Or if you'd rather I just do it all at once, I'm happy to do that. Anybody have any preference there?
Get them done.
All right, here we go. All right, here we go. So I want to start off with, I'm not sure which staff member would like to answer this, but the contract does specify, I believe it's in paragraph seven point two, that the price can be increased due to changes in law. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And, and are you familiar, who was that who answered that? I'm sorry.
Hey, Nancy, Nancy Allen.
Okay, Nancy.
That, that other agencies, including the state legislature, can and have recently added regulatory fees that, that would, that would do so.
Okay. So the question I was going to ask you then, are you familiar with Senate Bill nineteen dash one ninety-two that was passed last year? It's titled the Front Range Diversion Enterprise Grant Program.
Yes.
Okay. And so I'll, I'll just summarize it. It, it requires the haulers remit to the state fifteen cents per ton of waste dropped in a landfill through twenty twenty, and then it increases by fifteen cents per year, per ton, every year after that, until it gets to sixty cents, and then increases by inflation. So the question I have is, is, are those regulatory increases built into the price of this contract? Or after two years of this contract, will there be a price increase due to just that single regulatory action?
I'm going to do this in two parts. First, I am the Chair for the Legislative Committee for the Rocky Mountain Governmental Purchasing. And I'm aware of that. And yes, we, it was, no, it was not built in. Yes, it will continue to be a fee that will be tacked on. And Kate, I know you want to say something as well.
I would just say that Republic, like this, this program was in place before this RFP was completed. So that was part of their understanding that these fees were on the table, that they would escalate over time. It's my understanding that that's part of what the CPI increase may cover.
Okay. But is there anything in our contract that prevents this already existing change in law from? change in law from impacting the rates people will pay? Or is it just restricted for the first two years?
The regulatory fees will, are, are above and beyond, as far as I can remember from the contract. Regulatory fees are above and beyond what was negotiated. Emily?
Okay. We do have a line in our contract that says for any changes occurring after May 1st, 2023. So that is in 7.2 as well.
Okay. So for two years, the, our rates won't be impacted by these regulatory fees. But after two years, for the remainder of the contract, they will be. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
They could be if there are regulatory fees. And also, if you look through the 7.2, I think it also talks about that they have to be able to show how that cost is being passed on to affect the contract.
Exactly. But we do know that this SB 19-192 has been passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. And it does increase fees on trash per ton for a number of years. And then starts adjusting for inflation after that. We do know that's correct, right?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Okay. So I'll leave that alone. Let me, let me just go to the price increase. Or let me ask a different question. So also in the contract, is there a place that says that the recycling price of this service can go up after the second year? In addition, and, and that's just the price for the recycling. Am I correct about that? I believe it was an 8.0 in the contract.
Correct. That's the section that talks about the increase.
But that's just for the recycling part, because there's also then the, the hauler can write, can raise their price, correct? In the, by contract as well?
Based on the index.
Based on the index. And can you tell me what index that is?
The Consumer Price Index has specific line items that are called out, including water, sewer, and trash.
Okay. So I Googled Water Sewer Trash Index, and I saw about 10 or 12 different ones. This is the, the Consumer Price Index, Water Sewer Trash Index?
Yes, from the Bureau of Labor. I can send that to you. I can tell you the last five years data on this.
Okay. What is the last five years' data?
I'd have to, it's, it's a chart. I could pull it.
Oh, that's okay. No, never, never mind. I thought, I thought you, I thought you had it at hand. It's okay. It's no problem. If you could provide, if you could provide that just for, for both us and for the citizens, you know, as this comes to, comes towards us, just so they have some idea, you know, what, what does that look like for price increases? Because if I'm not mistaken, a 3.5% price increase over the course of 20 years doubles the price. Is that not true?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that is true. And if you look at the Consumer Price Index in the 70s, 80s, it was much, much higher than it is today. And I think in the age of COVID, you know, hopefully, this is a short-lived recession and that will bounce once we have a vaccination, a vaccine. But I, I think you're correct that in the short term, I think it's, we're gonna, we're gonna see these increases go down because gas prices are lower. I'm guessing it's a little over 3% in the last couple of years.
Right. But, but it, right, I was going to say, in, in all the water, National Water Sewer Trash indexes I could find, I didn't find a single one that ever had a year-over-year decrease. I only saw increases. Granted, increases at different rates, but, but I never saw a decrease at all.
You are correct.
Okay, got it. So, so it only, so in, in recent history, anyway, it only increases, maybe, you'll, you'll get us some information so we have an idea how much. So that's the three places that the price can be raised essentially by the hauler for the costs of providing the service. The other part of the cost of this to residents is the fee that the city is going to charge. Are the city's increases in their fees capped at all? Or is that just purely an annual city council action that will determine what the city's fees are?
Brian, you want to answer that question?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Marriott. That is purely a city council action. There is no cap on what the fee structure is for the city, though we are subject to only being able to charge what the actual costs are related to administering the program.
Right. So whatever, whatever cost to administer the program, that those fees can be raised, or whatever that is. But we can't raise it above that. In other words, we can't use this as a way of collecting money that we use other places.
That is correct.
Okay, got it. Okay. So let me ask you, let me ask another couple of questions here. So I know in, in the past, as we've talked about this, it's been said that if folks have trouble paying their utility bill, that their water won't be shut off because they didn't pay their trash bill. And I believe that's true. But the question I have is, is if someone's really struggling and they've got a $240 utility bill and they only have $160, and they put that $160 towards their utility bill. And then the next month, they're starting $80 behind and they can't catch up. And in fact, they fall farther behind. How will the city apportion their utility payments to where short paying on their trash service will never result in them getting their water shut off? If, if they, if they fall behind and, and aren't able to catch up for a significant period of time?
We're going to have Jason O'Keefe answer that question.
Okay. So just as we do for water, wastewater, stormwater, every time we do a shut-off, we look at each one of the shut-off bills and we take the money accordingly, right? So water first, wastewater second, stormwater. If the trash is the part that's not being paid, we will not shut the water off. So we look at that every week when we do shut-offs.
Okay. So whatever people pay on a utility bill will go first to water? And I'm assuming trash will be the last on that list?
Yes, last on the list.
Okay, got it. So then that brings up the question then, how will Republic Services be paid on delinquent accounts? Will they be paid only when the city actually collects the money that's owed on delinquent trash accounts? Or will the city front that money and then make it back up whenever they catch up?
Yes, the city will front that.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So the city's gonna, the city's gonna pay Republic regardless of whether the person paid or not?
Yeah, the services have been rendered by Republic. And so we will pay them for the services. Then the billing becomes between us and the resident.
Got it. Okay, all right. And then last thing, what do you do about, what, what is the city's plan to do about vacant houses? I have two of them on my street. Or new development where people have not yet moved in? So unoccupied property, will, will they be being billed for trash service if there's no one there?
So just as we do with vacant houses right now, we build the minimum service fee for those properties. And we shut the water off and don't provide that service.
Okay. So does that mean you'll charge them the minimum service fee for trash and then not provide them the trash service?
Correct, just like we don't provide water. So we will provide no services to them. So it's just a minimum fee to process the billing.
Okay. So they'll be racking up a bill for, for, for trash, but it'll be the, the
88 cents.
Be the, well, be the 513. Is that correct? Or will it be 88 cents?
Well, they haven't opted out yet because they're empty. So it'll just be the 88 cents.
Okay. So the, the, the 425 the Republic would get for not servicing that address, they won't get for not servicing that address then?
Right. We have very few houses in Arvada that are empty, so it's, it's a pretty small amount.
Right. Okay. My last question, and then I'll move on to the questions that, that some citizens have asked me. And this would be for Ms. Morris. Ms. Morris, I have a question for you about equal protection under the law. So I look at, clearly through my questioning, you can tell one of my difficulties with this program is charging people for $4.25 for not getting anything. But yet, other people in the city are not charged 425 for not getting anything. Do, is, is that an equal protection under the law issue? Do we have a concern there about treating people differently depending on where you happen to live?
No, we don't. We have specifically looked into this issue. We've done the legal research. And for the reasons articulated previously in this meeting, there are very specific reasons why we are charging some people one fee and some people another. And I have no problem with any sort of equal protection issue based on that reasoning that, that we've provided.
Okay. All right, sounds good. All right, let me move, let me ask a couple of questions that my, that folks have asked me to ask tonight. So the bulky item, two bulky item events a year, those are drop-off, correct? They're not picked up at people's houses?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And, and residents will be limited to only five items? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So the bulky item is bulky item drop-off for five items. What will you do for people who have bulky items that they'd like dropped off, but they don't own a vehicle that can do it, but their neighbor has a truck who offers to take them also? Will they be only limited to five items then between the two properties together? Or can neighbors help each other with taking bulky items places? Or how are you gonna, how are you gonna police that?
Well, if the two neighbors show up together with their truck and they both have a license or an ID that says they're an Arvada resident, then they could bring 10 items.
So that's the only way it works is if, what about folks like me who own a dozen properties? Do I get to bring 60 items?
Wow, excellent question.
You would get to bring five items per resident, Councilmember Marriott. So the answer would be if you're going to take credit for all 12 of those, yes, you may bring 60 items.
Okay, sounds good. And then, so someone asked me, in the contract, there is a, looks like there's a program by which if folks have extra trash, they can go to the city and pay for a sticker. But then they can put on a trash bag, and that's how the hauler will pick that trash bag up, but otherwise will not. Is that correct?
It is correct. Councilman, we have, that's part of the program that has not been completely finalized. We wanted to ensure that there would be a way that extra trash pickup could be done, whether or not it's a sticker or some other mechanism that we can use technology-wise. But it is part of the actual program implementation that is been addressed in our future planning that we do need to finalize the exact details on that.
Okay. So we're not going to do that now, but some, someday in the future, we could do that or something like that?
We, we are going to offer that option. We just don't know exactly what that physical logistic mechanism is going to be.
Yeah. If this contract's approved, then it would be offered when the program starts, is implemented. It'll, it'll, we'll figure it out before that, in other words.
Okay, got it. Okay, here's another question. Somebody asked me, this is going to orphan somewhere around 60,000 to 80,000 trash cans? What is the city or EcoCycle or Republic Services plan to do about that? Or is that just the residence problem?
May I? The plan at this point is for residents have the choice. Of course, they own their existing trash cart and they can put it in their backyard and use it for their, you know, to collect their spring and fall stuff until they're ready to, to bring it in to drop off. But there's also going to be an offer of a recycle event.
Okay. And, and that'll be sometime in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Here's another question. Somebody asked me, why no senior discount?
That's a great question. Go ahead, Kate, go ahead.
I was going to say, we have seen in other communities that seniors are very happy with the 32-gallon trash size. Since you often have a small household not producing a lot of trash. So that ability for them to choose their own trash size and have a small cart has been promoted in a lot of communities as a great senior program. So that's what we're looking to offer.
Okay. So no senior discount, just a volume discount for everybody? Okay. Let me ask another one that somebody asked me. So, and I only have this one and one left, so I'm almost done. Thank you for bearing with me. Someone asked me, said Golden's minimum service fee is $6.75, which is higher than the 513 in Arvada. But for 6.75, they actually do pick up your trash can. How come theirs is seemingly so much of a better deal than ours?
Go ahead, Kate.
I would say that Golden does have a good deal, but they negotiated their contract in 2015. So they are looking at a contract renewal somewhat soon. Those, those are pretty good rates, but a lot has changed in trash business in the last five years. Costs have gone up with unemployment, a shortage of drivers, changes in recycling markets. So we're seeing prices go up across the country. And so, so, yeah, they have a great deal right now. But we did look also at other cities in the area and the rates that they've been negotiated in the last one or two years. And Arvada's rates are very competitive with what's being negotiated at this time.
Okay. Has Golden rates gone up over the five-year term of their contract?
Yes, they have a similar CPI adjustment. So I'm not sure exactly where the rates are today. But I know they have been adjusted every year of the, or I, I'm not sure exactly what the rate adjustment has been, but I know that they have changed since the beginning of the contract.
Okay. All right. And then here's the last one. So I had a resident ask me, so what about if I have a trash contract that's longer than when this starts? Is there a way that the opt-out fee could be phased in over the first couple of years of this program as opposed to imposed on people from day one?
This is an issue that we are looking into currently. Most of the major trash haulers do not require a contract to sign up for their services. And that was what most of our assumption had been, was that individual residences would not be under contract. And we are trying to find out more information if there are any residents that are under contract. Originally, the ordinance was to go on April 20th with the effective date being May. So it would have given a full year notice to everyone. Now with, because of the pandemic, we are cutting that to less than a year. So as a team, we are addressing that internally and trying to determine whether or not this is an actual issue. Obviously, if it's an HOA that's in a, in a contract, it's a little different because they can stay in their contract. And once their contract expires, they can join the program and they wouldn't be looking at that $5 minimum service fee.
Right. But it's not unusual for people to pay for a year's trash service upfront. I know I do that on several residences.
And it's an issue we're discussing internally. We haven't been able to get any real data on what kind of numbers we're looking at and whether or not we should delay the effective date or just deal with those on a case-by-case basis.
So that, that intrigues me. So deal with it on a case-by-case basis. Would that, would that mean you wouldn't pay Republic the 425 on those particular people? Or does it mean the city would eat that temporarily and then try to make it up later? Or how would you deal with that on a case-by-case basis? Seems like either you, you can, you know, not charge them an opt-out fee till they're actually out of contract or you can work it into the mix somehow, but it doesn't seem like there's any other options besides that.
And internally, the team still has to discuss. We have not had a discussion around this yet. And we will work hard to try to get a good answer for our, our community.
Okay. All right. That might be something you might think about in the lead-up over the next month. Try to provide some clarity on that, because I think that will, in, in, you know, that will, will help people decide how to behave over the next month. I think that would be pretty unfair for someone to, to, to not know what the landscape there is. So I would suggest we figure that out maybe right away.
It's on our agenda for tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, Vincent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I just want to actually start because Mr. Marriott was asking about some numbers related to the Consumer Price Index. And I actually have those numbers, so I would love to give them to you. From, so I was just going to do a scale here. So from the previous three years, 2017 to 2019, the average the previous three years, 2017 to 2019, the average rate of increase was 3.59%. Over the last five years, which includes 2015, which saw a significant dip, that is an outlier in the pattern, um, that we see over the long term. Uh, it is 2.7%. Over 20 years is 3.07%, over 30 years it's 3.59%, and over 40 years it is 4.41%. What this indicates to me is that over longer periods of time, we start to see inflationary rates go up. Um, obviously, what's most relevant is the last five years, although we'll see what happens with 2020, and obviously this year is gonna be a significant outlier. But even looking at the past three years, we're looking at 3.59%. Our current contract is locked in at 2.5 to 3.5%. So what this tells me is that looking at the rates of, um, adjustment, our, our contracts right on par and we, I think, I invite city staff to correct me here, but I don't believe we can exceed the 3.5%. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Excuse me, Lauren. Uh, sorry, John, I have not limited my time. Thank you, I appreciate that. So if we have, uh, 3.7% spike this year in the national index, the city of Arvada will be paying 3.5%.
Plus regulatory fees, that is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. So John, just those are the numbers. Then I wanted to go into a few resident, uh, questions that I have received from residents. And the first is regarding bin sizes. This is one of the most common, um, uh, things that is coming up to me, um, across the board. With my residents in District Two, we have a lot of big yards over here in District Two. We love them, but they also take a lot of maintenance. And in the summertime, I know we're gonna have the, uh, uh, the yard event in the spring for larger events. And thank you, Mr. Devon, for clearing up one of my questions earlier when you said that seniors and those with physical disabilities would be able to have those picked up as opposed to, um, having to do drop off on those. Um, but in addition, do residents have the ability to change bin sizes if they say have less in the winter and then more in the summer?
Yes, uh, you, there is a, a limit on how many, uh, times they can change per year. But they are allowed a, a change, especially, uh, it's completely open in the first six months. And then thereafter, I think it's one free change per year.
Okay, and say they wanna do two changes per year. If one is free, what does the second one cost?
Emily is a $15. I have to look it up. Sorry, I'll be back.
No, no worries, no worries.
It is a fee.
Yes. All right, yeah, if you could just, whoops, so sorry. If you could just, um, give me that fee, that would be great because, uh, that is something I have residents inquiring about. And the other is, is still staying on bins. Um, extra bins I know are allowed, so an extra 96 gallon is $5, an extra cycling is $4. Um, what about the bins that residents own? I know we touched on this briefly with Mr. Marriott in terms of, um, they can use them or whatnot. It, are, are bins that residents own able to be used curbside if they want to? Or are there parameters around that?
No, my understanding is that they, uh, want the, the bins to be uh, compliant with their trucks. And, uh, we also have the bins.
So if they have a compliant bin, uh, might they be?
Uh, they would still be charged for the extra bin.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Because it's a service fee, yeah.
Right, okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to be able to get that accurate information back to the residents, so thank you.
Councilmember Simpson, uh, Ms. Allen was correct. It is a $15 per part for exchange for more than, uh, twice per year. So after the first time being free, it is $15.
Okay, so financially, that seems like it would make sense if you need the larger bins six months of the year, but the small bin, um, six months of the year. But residents would have to look at their own budgets and determine what works best for them.
Yeah, as was brought up, there will be an option to pay for just additional, uh, bags if you need for, you know, Christmas time, uh, if, you know, that during the holidays, if there's just an occasion that you know you're gonna have extra trash, so you're not having to necessarily change your bin for that.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Okay, Ms. Ford.
Um, so I, I'm not sure who will answer this. So just to clarify what, uh, Ms. Simpson just said. So in other words, I can have a bin change once per year. And, uh, and so I could have, say, six months out of the year, a, a 96 gallon. And then the other six months, I could have the 32. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, it is.
And then, uh, that leads to, okay, and that, if, if I want an extra bin, uh, say I want an extra 96 gallon bin for the summer, when I do have a lot of tree branches and so forth, so that's an extra $5 charge per month?
It's approximate, yes.
Okay, and, and that leads me to some, uh, it, uh, some comments that I've been getting from residents that, you know, with the drop off, uh, we mentioned before that not everybody has a pickup. So it makes it difficult, uh, for those, like, uh, one gentleman mentioned, uh, you know, about having a large family and also having a property with a lot of trees. So in that case, um, if you couldn't drop them off, you have to throw them out. Which I, I'm hoping that at, in, at some point in the future, if this goes through, that we start to think about how we can get, and I believe Emily mentioned it, more options for residents who do have these large yards and wanna compost. They don't wanna just throw out their branches and, um, you know, yard waste. So that, that's an issue that I've been hearing.
Hey, uh, Mr. Jones.
I only have 74 questions. Just kidding. No, I have two questions. And actually, Nancy, I think, just had one clarified for me. So on the, the extra bin, is that the approximate $5, is that regardless of size? So it could be a 32 or a 96? Or is that why you're saying it's approximate?
You have, you have to go to the 96 gallon size in order to then have an extra bin. Your extra can, bin can be of any size. But, um, what they're trying to prevent is someone saying, I want the $11.32 gallon. And then I want an extra one for, it's like, the reason I say approximate, it's like $4.93.
Okay, and that includes, um, cause I, one of the questions that I think we probably all got was, uh, maybe from even the same person, was, you know, I have that extra bin for five years and I'm paying that $5, isn't that bin paid off? It's not just the cost of the bin, it's also the service, correct?
That is correct. Um, in fact, the, if you look at the dollars, the, the service to pay off the bin is a, a $3 and something cent. Um, where the service itself is what the, you originally saw quoted on the price form from Republic. So it's $8 and something for the service. And that again is not just trash, it's also recycle. Um, and then the additional $3 and something is the paying off of the bin.
Okay, and then, uh, just looking again for some clarity on the extra bags. So for instance, today in my neighborhood, I could put two bags out and I'm not charged any additional fee, but under this program, if I put those same two bags out, there's gonna be some additional fee.
Yeah, in fact, it's about $3.50 per bag.
So if it's not in the can, then they're not gonna pick it up. And I've had somebody ask me, well, what if my lid doesn't close? It's in the can, but my lid's not closed, are they gonna pick it up?
That's been a problem at other cities and I addressed that. We, um, the bin, the, the lid does not have to close.
Okay.
Short answer.
Those are my two questions. Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Miller, you're next.
I wanna give a huge shout out to the Sustainability Committee and to the city team for all the work you've done on this. We have been working on this for a very long time. We were talking about the timeline and it said December of 2018. I do remember, um, when I first was elected onto council back in 2017, one of the first things we got was a community survey. And the results we got in January of 2018. And we brought it up with the strategic plan then, um, the str, the retreat, um, the strategic retreat that we had in January of 2018. So we've been talking about this for two and a half years. And, um, so I just wanted to put that into perspective because I know that we see a lot, I receive a lot of emails, a lot of calls and a lot on social media that we are rushing this, like, two and a half years. That's not rushing. And also wanted to just clarify that, um, you know, one of the things Councilmember Marriott said in the contract, that recycling pricing can go up, but it also can go down, which I'm excited about as things get, you know, um, competitive with pricing, those prices can go down. I wanna chat a little bit about, um, the $15 or the $5.13 fee that we talked about for, um, quite a while. And I agree with Councilmember Ford's, um, point that she made on there. There is a cost of putting extra trucks on our streets. You know, we, one of the reasons we did this and in the, one of the original reasons was to cut down on traffic. You know, we don't have enough money to maintain the, the current street infrastructure that we have today. And so, um, that fee will, will go towards, towards that. Um, and then last but certainly not least, Arvada has one of the lowest recycle rates in the metro area at 13%, 13% of our residents recycle. We are number 16 out of 18. I'd like very much to see us come up from that number. Thank you guys for the great conversation tonight. I really appreciate it.
Ms. Simpson?
Uh, I also just wanted to make a, a quick note, um, with some of the conversations that have been happening on social media, as well as some of the emails I have received. There, um, to elaborate on, uh, Mayor Ford's, um, Miller's point, this has been going on for two and a half years. This is not something that, uh, we're trying to sneak under the wire. And in particular, the, the, the accusation that's, that's, I'm having the most trouble with is the notion that there are kickbacks happening, um, particularly amongst our city staff. So I just wanna take a quick moment to say that our city staff is full of deeply, deeply integrity-driven people. And they are wonderful. They have worked hard on this. Whether council decides to adopt it or not, or whatever happens with this, they have had a transparent process. They have done excellent work. I am very proud of them and to accuse them of things such as kickbacks or, um, accepting bribes or anything else is unconscionable, in my opinion. And so I just wanted to take a quick moment to say thank you to our city staff for working hard on this. To my fellow council members, we have a robust debate. We don't always agree. But we know where each other stands and we know each other is engaging in as honest a process as possible. And so, uh, just wanted to put it out there. I stand firmly by our city staff and if somebody wants to take a look at my financial records, let's grab a coffee and you're welcome to. So with that said.
Okay, there are no other, uh, hands up, and I'm not gonna permit any other hands up because I'm going to take the final word on this. Um, uh, first of all, I'll echo the comments that, uh, I don't think any member of our team or any city council member stands any financial gain in the outcome of this, one way or the other. Uh, I do appreciate, um, in response to Mr. Devon's opening comments, all the hard work that's gone into this. If there are those individuals on council who are opposed to this, it's not because of the work that's been done by our team. It is because of philosophical differences as to whether or not we should adopt a, uh, a single hauler system in the city of Arvada. Uh, finally, and this hasn't been brought up, but a number of people have talked to me uh, about, it's keeping up with the theme of everybody else's talk of, I've had people talking to me telling me this, uh, that this should go to a vote of the people. So, Mr. Devon, I would request that we have a conversation with Republic as to whether or not it, um, blows up the deal if we make this, uh, contract contingent upon, um, voter approval in a subsequent election. At least for that, to get that information so that we have that, uh, prior to our discussion on, on June 15th, if you would please.
Will do.
Okay, with that, uh, Mr. Devon, do you need anything else from us tonight? Or have you had quite enough?
I, I, I sure hope I don't, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, I will thank, I do thank the council for the discussion. And I also thank our team for hanging with us, uh, through this entire workshop. So thank you, thank you all.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you.